Ladies and gentlemen, good evening and welcome to City Hall for tonight's City Council meeting and the committee of the whole meeting immediately thereafter. Tonight's City Council meeting is called to order, and I kindly ask our city clerk to please take the roll call. So far, so good.
Furnish?
Here.
Kilburg?
Here.
Husarak?
Here.
Maliki?
Here.
Marx?
Here.
Mayor?
Mayor here.
Palquess?
Here.
Pashke?
Here.
Reineke?
Here.
We begin our City Council meetings with the Pledge of Allegiance, and it's my honor to welcome and introduce Patty Donahue, who will lead us in the pledge, and she will be also taking the floor later on with some cool announcements.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our first order of business, ladies and gentlemen, is to proclaim November 29th, 2025 as Small Business Saturday in the City of Geneva. Is there a motion? Motion by Pashke, seconded by Marx. All in favor of this proclamation, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
And those remotely?
Aye.
Bowery, aye.
Thank you both. Unanimous. Onto item B. As in, boy, oh, boy, is this exciting. We're going to proclaim November 30th, 2025 as Artists' Saturday.
Sunday.
Oops, Artist's Sunday in the City of Geneva. And before we take a motion and a vote, I want to introduce you to Ms. Donahue. The floor is yours.
Well, I would just like to say thank you to the City of Geneva for, you know, helping us make this a thing.
And it is a thing.
It is a thing. It's a national, actually, a national, I don't want the holiday, you don't really call it a holiday, but it's a movement. And it's following Black Friday, Small Business Saturday, Artist's Sunday, to involve all of us artists and shops that sell local art, to bring attention to it and have people be able to, you know, come in and shop with us is kind of the main goal. And we are going to, of course, be having, can I mention our?
Of course.
Our road rally?
Unless it's illegal, don't say anything.
We're having the Artist's Sunday Road Rally here in Geneva, and we were honored to be able to get the grant from the City of Geneva. Thank you very, very much for that.
Of course.
And I have some compadres here with the art store owners and artists with us tonight that are participating in our inaugural event. And it's going to be just a whole lot of fun. Eight different stops on November 30th from 11:00 to 4:00. You come out, you can, you know, enter to win prizes from all of us, you know, not homemade, but, you know, well, they are. I mean, we're artists, we make stuff, right? So we're going to be having an after-party at Studio Patty D after the rally to do a nice Facebook Live raffle for people to win things.
Excellent.
And people hopefully will doing a lot of shopping, come for the holidays, stay for Artist's Sunday, make a weekend of it, and that's what we're hoping to have happen.
Would you like to introduce your, as you stated, compadres who are with you this evening?
I would love to.
And if each would like to say a few words about your own business, please, we welcome you to do so.
Well, let's start with Martine. She's with the, because I changed her name, so I get it wrong, the Geneva Foundation for the Arts.
Yes, of course.
Come on up. And then we have, should I do them individually, or do you want to?
Whatever you prefer.
Okay.
As artists are, be creative.
You want to say anything?
Martine, thank you for your service, by the way. We appreciate your. Thank you very much. And again, thank you very much for the grant that will help bring arts to the forefront in Geneva at the end of November.
Right.
Thank you.
This is hopefully the first of many years of this event, so.
Yes, absolutely.
Jean, the winding deer path.
Just thank you for doing this and helping us promote art in the city. We want more and more of it to be included and done. My shop is an art gallery and gift shop, and it's nature-inspired, so we combine nature and art and hopefully bring art indoors, especially in the wintertime when you can't be out in it as much. She can bring it inside.
And all local artists.
Beautiful store.
All local artists that she represents.
And who does your Instagram account, Jean?
Helen McLaughlin.
It's a heck, they do a heck of a job.
She does really good, yes.
Okay, sure.
It's not me.
And whoever speaks next, we're going to invite you to come closer to the microphone. We've got about six million people tuning in.
We have Caitlin and Brandon from Midwest Nice here with us. They also have a shop.
Yeah, this was the mistake on the sheet.
What the heck, man?
Caitlin and Brandon.
I want to bang the gavel.
Yeah, how are you, man?
Yeah, our shop Midwest Nice represents over 100 local artists and makers from the Chicagoland area and the Midwest. We have a shop in Geneva, which is my hometown, and we also have a location in Chicago where we live. And yeah, we're very excited to be able to celebrate our artists and with like-minded shops and individuals, and we're going to have some artists in our shop ourselves, so yeah, it'll be a fun night.
Absolutely.
So do you commute back and forth to Chicago?
No. So my mom actually manages the shop, which is who is on the sheet there.
Which is Deb.
Yes, yes. So she manages the shop along with one of our artists, and then I come at least once a week, once twice a week, to do whatever needs to be done.
You have a private plane that takes you to and fro?
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, good.
Then we have Ulysses from Evoc Salon and Gallery.
Of course. The coolest places in town.
Hello, I'm Ulysses Rosco, and my business is Evoc Salon and Gallery, and I decided to put the two together because hair is art.
Yes, it is.
And so the goal is to inspire creativity in everybody who walks in there.
So just out of curiosity, whose hair on the dais is perhaps the most artistic?
Oh.
Oh, my God, I just got to check it out. You don't have to answer that if you don't want.
Everybody here?
We're missing Victoria from Tinkerbell's Art is also going to be part of our road rally, as is Amelia. She's going to be opening up her home studio, which is pretty cool, because people don't always get to see a lot of artists' work out of their homes, and she's going to be opening up her home art by Amelia. She's over by my shop on the east side of Geneva, so we'll have a couple stops there. We have a couple stops on Randall. Also, Kurt from Children's Art Classes is not here, but he will be part of the rally as well. And then we have four downtowns. So we have, you know, a bit of a mix. It's a road rally, so people get in their cars and can drive from one end of town to the other.
And who's the guy taking pictures of you tonight?
This is courtesy of Ulysses. I'm not sure.
My friend Alec.
Oh, man, nice.
And then Kristen's going to get one too for me. She's my social media gal, so.
Not familiar with her, but yes.
Anyway, that's the gist of it. If anybody has questions for me, I'd be happy to try to answer them.
Yeah, questions from the dais. And I love the Studio Patty D.
Thank you.
It's cool.
And also proud owner of? Image Awards and Graving and Creative Keepsakes. Thirty-two years I've been in business now. My shop's on the east side of Geneva.
It used to be right down the street from the old Colonial.
It was right next door to the old Colonial for many, many years. And then I actually was in a position to be able to purchase my own space, and now that's where I'm at. So Geneva girl, born and raised.
Indeed.
So.
Indeed. Any questions from the dais, or comments from the dais? None?
None? Everyone thinks it's awesome.
Absolutely.
It's just an editorial comment. For those of a certain age, saying something is cool is actually very high-frain.
Thank you, Mark.
Oh, thank you.
It is.
This is going to be terrific, so we'll nod.
Thank you so much. We appreciate that very much. Your support is all, you know, it's really very, very appreciated to be able to pull off this inaugural event. It's really something.
Weather forecast, irrespective of the weather, it's going to be extraordinary.
It's going to be great, you know?
Absolutely is.
Slays are welcome in my parking lot.
I know, I know. What the heck? And I have a proclamation for you. I would like to entertain a motion to approve the proclamation to declare Sunday, the 30th, as Artist's Sunday in the City of Geneva. Motion by Pashke, seconded by Maliki? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
How about a group photo?
We would love it.
Sounds like fun?
Are you going to read it out loud?
Would you like me to?
I would.
Okay, let me, okay, hold on, Patty, because guess what? Let me show you something, just for your benefit, so when I struggle, you give me a break. This is how large I need the font to read, and this is how large the font is.
Uh, yeah.
Okay, so brace yourself. Artist's Sunday, November 30th, 2025, whereas the City of Geneva, so far so good.
Use your big print.
celebrates our local artists and the contributions they make to our local economy and community, and whereas the arts enrich our lives and enhance the cultural fabric of our city, and whereas Artist's Sunday, the first Sunday after Thanksgiving, is a national event that celebrates and supports artists of all kinds and encourages the purchase of original artwork from artists, and whereas Geneva is home to many talented artists whose work deserves recognition and support, now therefore be it resolved that the City of Geneva does hereby proclaim Sunday, November 30th, 2025, as Artist's Sunday and urges all citizens and guests of Geneva to celebrate this day by exploring the works of local artists. Considering the, and consider the purchase of original artwork and recognize the creative and diverse talents of our local artists. Signed by me on this date in celebration of Sunday, the 30th, as Artist's Sunday.
Thank you.
Very cool. Thank you.
Come on up, guys.
I'm going to try to not get in your way. I know, I'm trying to get in there, but you can't get in there. Squeeze together. Could I have you come to this side for me? Yep. Perfect. And everyone kind of squeezed together, shoulder to shoulder a little bit. Perfect. I'm going to take the first one, so everyone look at me, big smile. Perfect, right here, right here. Great, great, great. And thank you.
I said it's the hair, buddy.
Okay, one, two, and three. One, two, and three.
Thank you so much. I appreciate it.
Good to see you, man. How you doing? Good? No, you do? You do Patty's hair?
Oh, yeah.
Come on. See you in a couple weeks.
Yes, everyone's off.
Absolutely.
Did they write their postcards, like, to sign out?
Oh, yeah. Hand a bunch out, and we'll make sure they're distributed. We'll post those suckers, too. And none of us are friends or neighbors, so. Thank you, Patty. Good night. Thank you so much. Changing course ever so slightly, because this next presentation is as artistic as the Artist's Sunday. This is a presentation on the Fire and Police Pension Actuarial Report. So we have the pleasure of welcoming whomever is going to present this report to the podium. How are you, sir?
Good.
It's good to see you again.
Yeah.
For the record, share your name and, if you could, your social security.
My name is Jason Franken. I am with Foster &amp; Foster. I've been here several years, and you always put me after the most exciting things, so I guess I'm the one responsible of sucking the air out of the room after those.
Yeah, way to go, man.
So I'm here to talk about the May 1st, excuse me, 2025 Actuarial Valuation for the Police Fire, or Police and Fire Pension Funds. I have the reports in front, I think, does everyone have a copy of the reports? Yes. So I'm going to flip to page five of the fire report to begin with, and I guess I'll basically probably just talk concurrently about the police and the fire plans. Excuse me. So as I mentioned, this is the May 1st, 2025 Actuarial Valuation. Each year, we collect all of the members' data, you know, the active employees, the retirees. We calculate the liabilities, we compare it to the assets, we smooth investment gains and losses over a five-year period to eliminate some volatility, and we calculate such things as the funded, you know, the funded status, the funded ratio, the unfunded liability, as well as the city's recommended contribution requirement for the file that begin, that should be contributing, contributed in the following year. So on page five of the police report, fire report, excuse me, you know, in the top section, you'll see that we have liabilities. Last year was about $32.2 million. This year it increased with new benefits that are being earned and interest and all of those good things. We end up with a higher liability of about $33.4 million. Meanwhile, the assets, the smoothed assets, increased from 20 points, 20.7 to 22.5. So if you look at the third line there, you'll see that the unfunded actuarial accrued liability, the amount that our liabilities exceeds our asset, assets, actually went down this year. It didn't, it went down from 11, 11 and a half million to, you know, 10.9 million. So that's obviously good news. Your debt is a little bit less this year than it was last year. Accordingly, the funded ratio increased from 64.3 to 67.3. So you had a 3% increase in your funded ratio, which is obviously a good step in the right direction. The next section shows the contribution requirements. It's really made up of three pieces. The normal cost, those are the benefits that are earned by active employees. That went up by a fair amount, and it went up just mostly because there were, last year on our valuation date, there were 19 active members earning pension benefits. This year, there were 22. So that, you know, that went up by about $71,000. Then we have the administrative expenses. Those went up slightly, and then your amortization payment actually went down a little bit. In general, that amortization payment is designed to increase. You know, you've heard the pension ramp. You know, that's the, that's the part of the contribution that the pension ramp, you know, really applies to. You'll see it actually went down this year because our unfunded liability did go down. So at the end of the day, we are seeing a slight increase in the contribution from 13 point, or 1.367 million to $1,420,000. So an increase of about $54,000 for the fire plan. Okay? Any questions on that?
Any questions on the dais for our special guest? Alderperson Kilburg?
Explain the market, the actuarial value, the difference in market value.
Okay, so let's, if you look at page seven.
I'm looking at 11, but go ahead.
Okay, actually, I got a better page that will help me. So if you flip all the way ahead to page 19.
And that's 19 of the attachment, correct?
Oh, sorry, that's 19 of the actuarial report.
Of the actual report.
So the number's in the bottom right-hand corner. I don't know what page it is in the packet.
23.
23, okay. So each year, as I mentioned, we smooth investment gains and losses over a five-year period. So if you were, you know, our assumption is that we'll get 6.75%. So if we earn, now, hang on a second. I flipped on the police report rather than the fire. So if, in any year, we earned 11.75%, we earned 5% more than our expectation. We're assuming 6.75. We earn 11.75. Rather than recognizing that entire gain immediately, we recognize it over a five-year period. So we exceeded our expectation by 5%. We would recognize 1% of that gain each year. The purpose of it is to eliminate volatility, because the next year, we get 0%, you know, then we have gains to offset the losses. We end up with, you know, a more stable and predictable contribution. And so, like I said, each year, we calculate the expected investment earnings. You can see that in the middle of the page. And in this year, we were expecting $1,375,000, but we actually earned $2,079,000. So we earned $704,000 more than what we were expecting. We recognize that, that $704,000 gain goes into the table. We recognize 20% of that, and we defer 80% of that gain. So as of April 30th of 2025, for 2025, we still have a $563,000 gain that we're going to be recognizing over the next four years. Last year, you know, we had a gain as well. We have almost $400,000 left of that gain to recognize. The two prior years, we were, you know, fell short of our expectation, and so we have losses in those years. If you look, you add up the deferred gain or loss, we end up with a deferred gain here of about $24,000. So that's basically, you can see that it's working. You know, we have gains and losses. At the end of the day, we, you know, we only have a slight gain that's left to recognize. On the police fund, you're going to see something, you know, a little bit different. We have about a $600,000 unrecognized loss that is, that we'll be recognizing over the next five years. So that's going to, for the police plan, that's going to provide a little bit of a headwind as we go into next year, because the returns just over the last few years just haven't been quite as good for the police plan as they have been for the fire plan, so we have a loss there. So that $24,000, once we have that, it goes back up into the, to the top of the page. We, in this case, subtract the gain from our market value, and so our market value is $22,510,000, but our actuarial value is 22,485, because we have an unrecognized gain that's going to help us, and as we recognize that gain, those two numbers will converge. So that might be more than you were looking, asking about, but that's how, that's, that's what the market value versus the actuarial value. And the actuarial value is the number that's used in all of our calculations.
In essence, the market performed quite well last year, and we averaged the excess earnings over what we projected over a five-year period.
Yep.
Does that summarize it?
Yep, I think so.
Okay.
Okay.
Anyone else from the dais before we continue? All yours, sir.
Okay, but on, moving on to page five of the police, my page five of the police fund, you know, just looking at the summary sheet again, you know, our liabilities increase with benefits and interest, and then they're offset by benefit payments that are made from the plan. Then we have our smoothed asset value, and then we, once we have both of those numbers, we subtract the assets from our liabilities, and you'll see our unfunded actuarial liability is 20, you know, almost $24 million this year. That's about, it's a little bit higher than last year. Last year was $23,816,000. So there is a little bit of an increase on the police side, and some of it has to do with those investment losses that we have on the police side that we didn't have on the fire side. So there is a slight increase to the unfunded liability, but our funded ratio also improved for this plan. 58.1 last year, 59.6% this year. So this plan, the police plan isn't funded quite as well as the fire plan. If you recall, the funded ratio for the fire plan was about 67%. So that, you know, when there's more unfunded liability, you know, there's, you know, the payments are going to increase by a little bit more year over year. And once, when you scroll down to the next section, the contribution requirements, you'll see that the normal costs, those benefits that are earned by active employees, that did increase by a fair amount here as well, and we had two additional police officers this year versus last year, so that's a big chunk of that. Then the amortization payment, you know, we saw it going, you know, rain flat essentially for fire, but here, you know, it did go up by about $100,000, because we do have a little bit more unfunded liability this year than last year. Once you net the member contributions, you'll see that the recommended contribution, you know, is, you know, going from, going up about $150,000 to $2,738,000. The, you know, as a percentage of payroll, you know, that's the bottom section here, because the plan is effectively being designed to be, you know, remain the same percentage of payroll each year. That's ideally the goal. It did go down as a percentage of payroll this year, because our payroll did increase quite a bit by the, you know, since we have two additional officers. It went up about $330,000 over last year, and so when you have the payroll in the denominator, a bigger, a bigger number than last year, you know, you get a lower percentage, that dollar amount, the contribution amount, is a lower percentage of the total, the total payroll for the group. Let's go back to page 25 on this, or, sorry, not 25, page 19. On, you know, since we looked at this on the fire side, you know, we did have a small investment, deferred investment gain, and if you look at the table, you know, the gains aren't quite as big, and the losses are a little bit bigger, so we end up with a deferred loss of $569,000. And so the smooth return was 600, 6.57%. So we actually fell a little bit short of our 6.75% target. We will continue to recognize that deferred loss, and so it will, you know, be a little bit of a headwind as we, you know, go into next, next year. Each year, we have a new gain-loss, so, you know, we had, you know, a gain, you know, in 2021, there was a gain, a pretty big gain. That one's falling off. You know, it's going to be replaced, and like I said, we are in a little bit of a hole on this plan, but not, not a huge hole, not, you know, like years when you have, you know, negative 5% or 10%. But, you know, we do have a little bit of a loss on the police plan that's going to be a factor as we go into next year's valuation. Are there any questions?
Comments on the police side of the ledger from the dais? Alderperson Kilburg, Alderperson Marx?
For the benefit of the public, you might explain who's managing these investments, and they've gone through some changes over the last decade.
Yes, so until 2020, the local, local pension boards, there's a five-member board for each of the two plans, managed all of the money. Those police board, those pension boards still exist for both plans. They're there for, to administer the plan. They no longer have, they no longer manage the money and the investments. That has been shifted to the consolidated plan. There's two, there's actually two separate consolidated plans, one for police, one for fire. All, you know, the money for all of the Article III plans, which all of, that's the police, all of the police plan money is now invested in one investment trust that's managed by a consolidated pension board. Last time I heard, I think there's about $12 billion in that plan, which your, you know, your $32 million is part of that, you know, $12 billion, but is now managed by the consolidated pension boards that, that are nine, nine-member more boards made up of municipal appointees, active appointee, you know, active members, retiree, retirees, and then I believe the IML, Illinois Municipal League, has an appointee, and I believe each union, police and fire unions have appointees as well. So now the money is managed at the state level. You get monthly, those board gets, they receive monthly statements from each, each fund that tracks the, your assets. So while your money is pooled for investment purposes, you know, you do get annuals, or monthly statements that shows you all the ins and outs, so you can track, so they can track the money for, that's, that's your money within the fund, just like a mutual fund.
Fire outperformed police last year, is what you?
From a, at a, you know, gross. Um, from a, at a, you know, gross level, the police fund earned nine, at least your, you know, you earn 9.57% with the, the police investments, and the fire investments earned 10.21. But, that could be just, there's different investment.
Sure.
Uh, allocations, you know, they each have their own asset allocation, which are completely separate. So, while the, the fire fund may have earned more, they maybe have taken, they may have taken more risk to get that extra 70 basis points.
Yeah. No, you answer my question, thank you.
Yep.
Alder Person Marks.
You know, how are, do our funding levels compare to other cities? Are we online? Are we behind? Are we ahead?
Yeah, I would, I would say that on average, the, the funded ratio for most plans is in the, I'd say 62% to 65% range. So, I would say that, you know, just based on this valuation, that the, the fire plan is a little bit head, ahead of average, and the police fund may, may be a little bit behind the average. But, you know, that's, that's kind of a broad statement because there, you know, you have a 6.75% investment return assumption. You know, you're, so your 59% funded ratio at 6.75%, you know, doesn't, you know, it's not an apples-to-apples comparison to compare it to a fund that's using 7% because they're, they're just going to have a higher funded ratio based on using 7% rather than 6.75. So, they could be at 64, you could be at 59.2 or whatever it is, but at the end of the day, they could be the same just because of the different assumptions. So, like I said, I would say that your funds are right in line with, with average.
You know, over the few, last few years, we were playing with that investment return rate. Have we caught up to where we wanted to be with that? Because there was some, some years, we had different numbers because we were getting to where we wanted to be.
Yeah, so, so as, as of 20, the 2021 valuation, when I was here, we were using 7.25%. And so, your funded ratio, I think I might even have, funded ratio in, in 2021 was, was actually over seven, over 70%. But, that was again, based on 7.25, a 7.25% assumption. You know, most funds were at seven or six and three-quarters, and, and so, we felt it was appropriate to lower that assumption to be in line with, with what the ex, future expectation was. And, and so, we did lower it from 7, 7.25 in, in 2021 to 6.75, or, sorry, to 7% in 2022. And, and then, well, actually, I'm, I'm, it's off years. So, in 22, it was 7.25, and then in 23, we lowered it to 7%. And then, last year, we, we lowered it to 6.75.
And you feel now that that's?
Yeah, yes.
The right place we should be?
Yep. Yeah, there's, you know, just, the, you know, and, and one of the things that, especially when we were looking in 2021, interest rates were really low. And, and so, 7.25% was, you know, really tough to get because, you know, fixed income was giving you 2%, 3% at, at most.
At best.
And, and so, since then, actually, rates have come up a, a little bit, you know, quite a bit. So, you know, it, it is, you know, the 6.75% is much easier to attain at this point with, with higher fixed income returns. But, you know, like I said, that 6.75 to 7%, you know, that's really the, the sweet spot for most public pension plans across the country.
Great, thank you so much. I just wanted to make sure we, I knew we were playing some, we were trying to make that assumption. I wanted to make sure we got there.
Yep, yep, we were getting it, getting it in line with where we, we thought it needed to be.
Great, thank you.
And we're there.
Anyone else on the dais? Any questions regarding the presentation? There is no action to be taken tonight. If there are no additional questions or comments for our presenter, we will graciously thank him for his time and his work.
Thank you.
Appreciate it very much.
Thanks for having me.
Thank you. Item four, folks, amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments this evening? Item five is the omnibus agenda. All items on this agenda that are marked with an asterisk are considered to be routine by this council. All those items can be considered and voted upon with one motion. Is there such a motion?
Second.
Marks makes the motion. Palmquist makes the second. City Clerk, please take the roll.
Marks?
Aye.
Mayor?
Mayor, aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Reineke?
Aye.
Bowring?
Bowring, aye.
Furnish?
Aye.
Kilberg?
Aye.
Kocrag?
Aye.
Malicki?
Aye.
With 10 affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero council members absent, the omnibus agenda has been approved by this council. We jump to item seven, which is a presentation. So, before we entertain a acceptance of this, I would like to first introduce our community development director, David DeGroot, who's going to tee this up. And then, following the presentation, we will ask for a formal acceptance of this report. Mr. DeGroot, the floor is yours.
Good evening. So, back in 2022, the RTA released a call for projects, offering technical assistance to communities throughout the, the region, including special funding districts. And at that time, we knew that Special Service Area One, which applies to a portion of the downtown, was set to expire at the end of 2023. So, as such, we applied for assistance, seeking recommendations on extending that SSA to, to cover those ongoing needs, and to seek recommendations on other funding mechanisms that might be available to us as a non-home role community to meet the needs of the downtown in terms of capital, maintenance, and development within the area. So, the study was not able to be completed by the end of 2023, but we still feel like the study provides valuable insight and recommendations into tools that might be available to us as a community. So, tonight, we're just asking to present that information for your information, your consideration, and answer any questions you might have. So, with that, I'll turn it over to Robert Morris with the RTA.
Good evening, Mr. Morris.
Good evening. Good evening, Mr. Mayor and Council. Thank you for, for having us. My name's Robert Morris. I'm with the RTA. I'm a principal analyst, but essentially, my role with the RTA is to manage projects through our community planning program, which this project is of that program. So, we offer technical assistance to municipalities throughout the entire RTA region. We do plans like equitable transit-oriented development plans, corridor studies, zoning code updates, and then this type of plan as well, which is a special financing district study. Oftentimes, we look at SSAs, business district, different types of funding mechanisms that allow your city to finance the different priorities that you have. And so, I just want to thank you all for, for hearing us, our, our report tonight, but also to thank the community. We, we had a steering committee that a lot of the folks from the business community here were involved in, gave us their time and valuable input. Also, the community at large, thank you for, for taking our survey. I know people are kind of surveyed out these days, so we appreciate all of the input that we got there as well. I'm going to go ahead and turn it over to the folks that really crunched the numbers and, and did most of the work in this report. And so, Christopher Stark with Johnson Research Group, and Ann Murphy's here as well, but I think Chris will be running us through the presentation. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Morris. Good evening, Mr. Stark.
Good morning. Evening. For the record, my name is Christopher Stark with Johnson Research Group. I will say, I did not think that 20 years later, I would be in front of city council and Mayor Burns would still be mayor, so you've got to be doing something right, sir.
Well, hold on, are you from Geneva?
Uh, my wife and her parents were lifelong Geneva, and I was a busser at 302 West for a number of years while I was still existing.
Oh, my, is that right?
I absolutely loved it.
I want to apologize for that tip Brad Kocrag left you, so.
[laughing].
It was no tip, was there?
No, it wasn't. I will try to be brief, which is one of my weaknesses, but I will talk through this quickly. I like financing programs. This is kind of my bread and butter. So, if you have any questions about terminology or whatnot that I say, please don't hesitate to pause me really quickly. So, broadly speaking, the idea was that we would come in, contracting didn't work out in terms of getting us to help you guys before you reestablished SSA Number One. But, the idea was that we would look at SSA Number One, how it had performed since its establishment and kind of amended expansion, and look at what happened over time with both the income that came in through that, and also kind of the, the expenditures and what the district covers. So, where are we in the process? We've done the final study, we've gone, and we've done the stakeholder engagement. Right now, the idea originally was that we would help you, after giving you a final presentation, go through the process of reestablishing SSA Number One. You've already done that, so that's not something we can do today to help you kind of on an ongoing basis. But, some of the findings are useful, and I think one of the things that would be useful is kind of talking about best practices of matching the tool that you're using with the type of service or infrastructure that you're providing. And so, I'll kind of get into that a little later in the process. First off, I imagine that the members of the council are familiar with SSA Number One. If the members of, of the public are not, just generally think you're going down Third Street to the metro station, you're coming across the river over to where Pheasant Run was, and you're going as far, you know, out as kind of the ACE hardware and kind of the development right over there. Generally, it is sticking only to commercial properties. An SSA is a business-type district. The intention of this SSA is very much started and, and kind of established around a state of good repair, initially focused really on the off-street public parking lots and making sure that downtown Geneva was able to provide adequate parking and kind of set that up for the local businesses so that they themselves, as they were designed kind of in that traditional development pattern that may not have had parking lots, you're able to kind of provide adequate parking. Over the years, the levy is a fixed levy at 0.7%. So, we're, we're talking $300,000 to $400,000 a year, you know, varies depending on the year. With your stable downtown tax base, it's a fairly stable levy. You're not seeing a lot of growth in it over the years. You did allow for additional kind of bond financing. We can kind of talk about bonds and how they're used specifically with this district, and then kind of thinking about that going forward when we're talking about any future infrastructure development, capital plans that you may have. So, this is kind of a simplified chart, kind of talking about how you're spending money. Working with city staff, when you look at the payroll ledger, that is talking about the, the staff time needed for city employees that are doing the state of good repair, doing the maintenance, going to ACE and picking up things if there are specific plumbing issues with sewers or drains or any of that kind of stuff. They're, they're around doing that. So, that's what the payroll side of it is. And then, the expenditure and general ledger, that's kind of all your service charges that are associated with that. It's broken out into different buckets, depending on the year and how it was categorized. But largely, what you're talking about is trash, street sweeping services, and then kind of the snow removal. And so, you see variability in given years based on what the, what kind of the weather and year provides, but also kind of the, the fluctuations in when maintenance needs to be performed. 2023, that's that expiration, so there wasn't as much expenditures. And then, 2024, the data there is representing a partial year because at the time we completed the study, we didn't have that full data set. And we'll kind of talk, we can talk about that a little more later. In terms of income, these, the table is supposed to represent that idea that you have a very stable property tax base. That's that color in the orange. Every year, it's fluctuating just about the same amount, kind of more or less. That bottom blue bar, you'll see it drops off in 2022. You had done special levies on the, on the SSA. This was a levy in addition to the general 0.7% levy. And so, you can see what happened is that when you finally get there, pays off and goes away. One thing I'd like to highlight is the, the top of, of the graph. And what you see is a couple different colors there. What that reflects is changes in inter-fund transfers in the green, so funds coming from the general fund to be supportive of the SSA. And then, also, kind of the fluctuations in the gray is parking violations and, and the share of parking revenue that was provided to the SSA. That has shifted over the years. We can kind of look at another table and see how that's changed because it is now being shared even more with the, the parking structure as well and with the general fund. So, that's, that's kind of where that is. But, the big, the big detail to, to think about is the lion source of your revenue is coming from the levy. And so, if that stays the same, you are going to need to find alternative revenue sources likely on an ongoing basis into the future. Again, that's up to you. Bond payments, I started off in the report, I have two charts. Here, I tried to do it in kind of a graphical format just to make life easier for everybody. Basically, what happened is in 2001, you issued a bond, and then slowly proceeded to pay it off over time. The first bond was a floating-rate bond with fixed payments of around $30,000 every year. You started to make those payments in 2016. You did a refinance, and refinanced to a substantially lower 2.4% fixed interest rate. In so doing, you also kept the principal and interest payments the same, which meant that you were able to dramatically pay off the remaining principal on that bond in a much faster fashion. Over the timeframe, it did cost about $240,000 worth of interest to do that infrastructure. So, very high level. How's this SSA doing? It's great. I, I personally think that you have a very good grip on how to use an SSA. As I was doing my background research, I was looking at the other SSAs that Geneva has done, thinking specifically around the communities where you built them out, and using it as a long-term financing tool is a really good method. I'm glad that you guys extended the SSA and, rather than letting it expire, because I think that it is providing valuable services to downtown. As we go into kind of the survey data and kind of stakeholder interviews, talking with folks, you know, there's definite value that this SSA is providing. That said, the, the stable base of property values, when you have a fixed levy, means that your income from the, from the levy, without being raised, is getting squeezed over time. You have this situation where, as your services are going up, as your payroll has been slowly increasing over time, you've been using other funding sources to kind of help balance that. But, if the intention is to continue to rely on the SSA for these same ongoing services or to theoretically expand services, you'll probably need to consider a modest increase to the levy rate. The final thing I would say is, bonds are a great tool when they have adequate funding and when they are paired to the, the type of capital investment that is being done. In the, in conversations with both city staff and with business owners along the corridor, the use of, taking out a large SSA bond to do standard maintenance is probably an expensive way of doing that. Not saying that it can't be done, not saying that you couldn't find community members and business owners that were interested in doing a new levy, because when we had conversations with stakeholders, if there were additional services they were receiving, there was a, a interest or a consideration that you could look at raising the levy rate. Now, what we're going to talk about next is some alternative funding sources and kind of alternative funding tools, and kind of talk about how they can be paired to what the SSA is trying to achieve. And kind of going forward, looking at, is there different tools that you should use for specific types of projects that you want to do? Assets and kind of constraints of where we're at. You've got an active downtown. You've got strong residential demand. You have, my personal favorite, as a data geek, you have opportunity sites that you identified in your downtown plan that are municipally-owned parcels and are vacant or parking lots. Formulaically, when you use other funding tools, such as a TIF district, again, not saying that that's something you have to consider, but when you have saying that that's something you have to consider, but when you have sites like that that are municipally owned, the value you can get on a per-acre basis from a municipally-owned lot or a parking lot is just so much dramatically greater with that sort of a tool than to take down an existing building and rebuild something, while it may be new, that is similar in size or character, because that incremental change won't exist. You've got a great downtown. You've got a key, even with changes that have occurred, key metro station, and you've got an active community with lots of festivals. Constraints, kind of going to that, high base EAV for existing sites. Some sites that exist, when you look at the opportunities as you've kind of envisioned them in your downtown plan, don't create a substantial amount of new density or new incremental EAV in order to drive new value, because they already are nice, well-maintained valuable properties. And so it's really that delta that comes in. I know that in the past, there's been kind of conflicts on what tool to use. You'd looked at a business district, we'll talk about that next. Their tools, they're useful. You only have a limited toolbox, is what I would say. And finally, the last thing is, and this is really evident in kind of the metro data, which Robert can clarify some changes in recent data, but just changes after the pandemic in both shopping and commuting and kind of visitor patterns that have occurred over time and still have lasting effects. Just a high level, we'll just stop here for a second, just showing you've got a number of, you've done the hard work. You, you've identified sites or things that you are interested in with your downtown, which is really wonderful. You're clearly organized. I will say, each one of these sites has a different way that you could think of addressing it or assisting it with a financing tool. Some are more complicated than others. I will get to the end of our presentation and talk about my favorite one, which is relevant to the RTA, which is number seven around the metro station. And I'll kind of highlight that as a, as a key point in this presentation. Toolbox. Sometimes the toolbox is bigger. You have other things like opportunity zones and other federal programs. Right now, the, the tools that you have available to you as a municipality are TIF, a business district, the SSA that exists already, or very targeted, which is individual economic incentive agreements with an individual business. It's a very targeted tool, and it's not kind of widespread usable for other city needs, per se. You do have overlap. TIF 3 already exists. You're doing the mill race in there. You've got some other developments that are residential in nature, so they don't overlap with the SSA. But that also includes some of your opportunity sites, which are the municipal lots right there on the west side of the river. If it's in, if it's in a TIF district, the, the SSA doesn't get to take advantage of those revenues in the same way that it would if it were not in a TIF district. So just understanding that even though you have this focal point of new development that is happening and is wonderful to see, because it is contained within the boundaries of the TIF district, it doesn't actually necessarily help the SSA until that TIF district expires. Business district. I understand from talking to city staff that there was consternation towards the end of this process from some pushback, and it didn't actually get adopted. But you did go through the process of a business district and looking at kind of what the boundaries would be and thinking about that process. A lot of the characteristics from that original study are still going to be relevant, but it has been long enough that in order to reestablish that process, you're going to have to start from scratch. That being said, this business district boundary gives you all of your key opportunity sites. It overlaps with TIF 2 as well as TIF 3, and it goes all the way down to the metro station and kind of encompasses the all of SSA number one. The nice thing about a business district compared to a TIF or an SSA in this case is that those two funding mechanisms use property taxes, where the business district uses a small levy on sales taxes or on hotel taxes. So it is a complementary tool rather than kind of a, a tool in conflict. Robert's going to tell you it did get a little better, which it has had some improvement in 2025. You had this situation where you had a very slow, steady climb over the decades. You built up to this nice, stable commuter ridership around 1,600 daily boardings. That also equates to full parking lots. So there's 1,200 lots that you were having a full utilization effectively of your lots. And then with the pandemic, that ridership has declined. It has come back a little bit, I think you said 16 to...
To averaging about 16% up from 2024 month-over-month this, this year. So that's, that's a little bit of a higher jump than we expected.
Mr. Stark?
Yes.
Repeat those statistics so everyone from home...
Yeah.
And elsewhere, we have this on the record.
Yeah.
You're seeing a 16% increase month-over-month.
Sorry.
Come up to, come up to the microphone, Mr. Morris.
Yeah.
Since you have a university name after you.
Yeah, a couple of them. One shut down unfortunately.
Yes, it is.
Still got one in Pennsylvania.
Merged with Roswell.
So we had a question prior to the meeting today that I think was either from council person or staff level, asking about the difference in ridership from 20, in 2025 compared with last year. I pulled some of the numbers that looked at months. I looked at April, May, June, July, August, and September. And the average of those months in comparison with 2024 was up 16% from last year. And we've seen steady increases each year, even now. And I think our expectation was that was going to taper off more than it has. So seeing a 16% jump from 2024 is actually pretty encouraging.
Is the jump from our metro station higher than the average jump in other metro stations? The best of your knowledge?
I don't think so. But I know that typically, you're, you're one of the strongest ridership stations on the line, and, and it's a focal point for us because of the, I guess, confluence of PACE service as well. I took the train out here today. I get off the train and there's two PACE buses that are synced up and, and sitting there, ready to, to take passengers from the metro and go from there. So for us, system-wide, it is a focal point station.
So the only thing I'm going to add to this conversation, because it's relevant going forward, is that is a big decrease to your downtown on a daily basis. Having ridden the train many a time from the station back in the day, that means you, you have 1,000 less, you know, 900 less people coming every day to Third Street. Now, not everybody stops every day at Third Street, but a lot of people to and from will make a stop. So the idea that you have this situation where your boarding numbers have declined is substantial because without working with the RTA to get that ridership number back up or to find alternative ways to bring activity into downtown, not just on a festival basis but on an ongoing basis for the businesses, that's kind of a, a big hurdle that you're going to have to work at for a number of years, is, is what I would say. Why is it useful for me? Because I like doing development projects. You have this commuter parking and you have local parking. When we did the survey, we talked about how, how people felt about them separately, because there's a very different kind of behavior pattern in how people think about it. Public perception was, for local activities, we do not want to pay. That, that came through in the survey, both in the quantitative data, but also in the qualitative responses to that after. The feeling whether it, if there was a garage built somewhere else in town was that it should be free and they did not want to pay for it. That creates financing issues in terms of how you actually fund the, the structure. But that was a very clear thing. Generally speaking, we'll go into some other stuff around the public survey in following detail. Parking for employees was very different for the local parking issue. Lots of business owners indicated struggles around the, the three and the four-hour parking restrictions, specifically around their employees having to leave mid-shift and move their vehicle even to the other side of the street in order to not get tickets. So that would just be something, I, I know that that came up in, in stakeholder interview after stakeholder interview, didn't matter size of business, that, that those restrictions for the employees was problematic. Commuter parking, we already kind of talked about this in the last page. 95% utilization, little lower on the effective utilization when you account for people actually coming and not just the paid lots. You had this weird thing that happened, though. The pandemic hit and Metro took away your less desirable parking lot with that overflow lot and some of the other lots in order to do that third track. So what happened was, in the remaining lots, your utilization rates still seemed like they were doing okay because the remaining lots were being utilized. But if you were to go to that furthest lot out, like this afternoon, it was empty. And so you have this situation where, if it is a long-term thing, Metro has said that they would really like to get back up there. I know that RTA is not necessarily sure that we're going to get back up to that 1,000 to 1,200 parking spaces needed for commuter parking. There's some openness to talking about how some of those lots could be repurposed. But that's just kind of where we're going. Outreach. We did two separate things. We had a number of stakeholder meetings. We had a steering committee meeting with different business owners, including Niche, Little Traveler, Lero, Harvey's Tales, some others, I'm sorry if I missed. One right there off the top of my head. We had about 400 people that responded to the survey, and we got a pretty good response rate from business owners, which was really a wonderful thing to see because we weren't just getting kind of public impression. And we broke it out kind of thinking like, where, where do you need the infrastructure or public support? And so you can kind of see broad, broad categories. The thing that came up all the time was public bathrooms, public bathrooms, public bathrooms. For the business owners, the issue was the plumbing and, and the overwhelm and kind of the challenge of providing that for themselves when it's not available. It was discussed on both ends of it, so it's not something that can just be addressed with a public restroom on one side of Third Street and not the other side of Third Street. So kind of thinking about dealing with that in tandem. All right, let's see. We have some, there we are. So we can go back kind of that parking conversation. Everybody feels safe walking. Everybody thinks that there's sufficient parking lot to get to where they're trying to go, and they think it should be free if you're going to build a structure. When prioritized among the different categories, everybody wanted public safety on State Street. That was a, that was a cited thing. Pedestrian safety and a feeling that, that being able to safely cross Third Street at multiple locations along it was, was highlighted. And then the public bathrooms, as we've said, lots of conversations about where possible locations could be, Chamber of Commerce and some other organizations that could provide it, but that, that throughout the, the conversations was an overwhelming thing. I'm a biker. I love biking. I understand some people hate it. Bike lanes in the survey were either loved or hated. So, you know, you, you can kind of fight your constituency there. So best practices. Your SSA is a relatively small SSA that is stable. I personally would not use bond funding to do a lot of stuff because the district is already tapped out from a standard property tax basis, and you're already using interfund transfers or funding from other sources. The, the bond would be a separate levy, but I think you would, you could potentially have challenges getting a large bond to do substantial work. You know, your levy cap is $5 million, which is pretty substantial, but not substantial enough for a parking garage. The, there's definitely a, a useful idea of annual reporting, not necessarily for all of them, but for SSA number one, something similar to what's required as part of a TIF annual report might be a useful consideration, just because it is different in character than the other SSAs in Geneva and because it serves such a broad constituency of businesses that having annual reporting may be a good tool just from best practices, but also to be able to demonstrate to the business owners what it is you're accomplishing, and so that when you do go or if you go to request an increase in the levy, you have something that you can very clearly point to. Use complementary financing tools. TIF is great for new construction. A business district is a wonderful complementary tool to an SSA to provide state of good repair and do things like that because it, instead of putting more burden on the business owners, what it's doing is kind of sharing that burden with members of the community who will frequent these businesses, but also visitors coming from outside the community. Downtown capital and, and financing strategy. You've identified a bunch of sites through your previous plans. A hard look at, at thinking about your capital plan and how you want to finance them is probably going to be necessary because unless you do a general fund bond, your SSA capacity to do some of the infrastructure that's been cited in the plan is limited, and the TIF districts are limited in their location and would be, would have issues with financing a public project because if it is a public project on an already zero base EAV site, it's not generating any value to pay down any bonds or debt. High value of those exempt sites. I can't, I can't tell you, it is so valuable from a development standpoint when using financing tools to at least have a consideration that those sites are really, really valuable from a development standpoint, because they don't make more land in downtown Geneva. Recommendations. I think you should look at the levy, review it. I'm not going to tell you that a 1% levy is the right point. That's sort of something that you should evaluate by speaking more with the, with the businesses and seeing if there are services that they think would be useful beyond what they're currently receiving. We did have some comments about coordination with the Chamber of Commerce and making sure that everybody was in alignment with city staff and the chamber and the, the business owners, everybody was kind of pointed in the right direction and in the same direction. The implementation of the downtown business district, I would, I would recommend relooking at the, the work that Ellers did for you back in 2013. I think that, that that is a really useful tool. It captures most of the downtown with the boundary as it was drawn, and most of the conditions that were cited in the report are going to remain consistent at this time. I will say, a TIF district around the metro station, specifically around some of those lots that could be redeveloped, is the one location where it might be worth, you're all sitting down and kind of thinking about a TIF district right there. They're, they're good redevelopment candidates. It kind of consolidates any limited density that you would be considering to near public transit, and it would provide a very strong additional residential anchor for Third Street. Finally, kind of a comprehensive work with RTA on your figuring out what that future commuter demand is actually going to be to see if you do have one lot or maybe more lots that are redevelopment candidates. And then, any questions? Happy to...
The dais is open for comments or questions for any of our guests, and I'll be happy to recognize whomever. Hold a person. Malakie, Flores, yours, then Kilburg.
Thank you. This is really informative. I have a question and maybe for RTA. I noticed in, in the, in the package that PACE sort of has like on their wishlist as a transit facility in town. Is that more of a, like a Field of Dreams thing where if like you build it and it'll get used? Or is there like, does PACE sort of have like a, a long-term idea of expansion where they think it's going to be needed at some point for, you know, service for the area?
Yeah. So that's a great question. And I, I don't know that it's identified, that there's a facility that's been identified here in Geneva for, you know, in a capital plan. I think so, it, it's kind of how you insinuated, insinuated that it's a, a bit of a, of a dream, you know, later on. I will say that they shared with us throughout this process how important, like I mentioned, I will say that they shared with us throughout this process how important, like I mentioned, we did an interview with them and with Metro together, and coordinating, coordination of services is a really high priority. They're also going through, I mean, there's a lot of change going on with transit in the region. We're happy to have funding and reform bill passed and hopefully signed into law soon, but Pace is going through an entire system revision, and so looking at their, all of their service planning for the entire region. And there's a number of different scenarios that have been identified, and increasing headways and increasing service here in Geneva is one of those potential outcomes, and now with additional operating funding, that it does look like we'll be able to be pretty aggressive, and when I say we, I mean Pace, will be pretty aggressive in the way that they restructure service. And so that leads to a higher likelihood of needing a facility. Not to say that, you know, it's set in stone, there's something that they need in Geneva, but increasing those services, you're going to have more buses on the road, you're going to need more drivers, and it could lead to a higher need for that facility.
Okay. Yeah, thank you.
Sure thing.
Alderperson Kilburg, then Alderperson Palmquist.
Was there any discussion about parking fees? And what's the history of our parking fees since it's, since the construction of the parking garage?
So you, I did not get the parking bond data specific to the parking structure. I do know that they recently paid off-
I know that, I'm just saying, the fees though, to park there.
That was not something that we evaluated as part of our-
Wouldn't that be a, wouldn't that be a potential recommendation? I mean, it looks like, I mean, when I go to Chicago and what I paid ten years ago and what I'm paying today to park, I mean, if we, have we had an increase over the last decade?
We have. The only way a municipality like ours can increase parking fees is in cooperation with those who helped build it through their funding. We need approval from Metro, we need approval from, I think, is it CMEC? The Pollution Control Agent? It's a very complicated process, but we did raise them from, I believe it was a buck fifty to a buck seventy-five about four or so, five years ago. And the chief might know that better than I do.
Well, I'm just saying, I think with what's happening with the RTA and what we anticipate, transportation costs in general, this is a part of transportation getting to work. I would think this is a way that the city of Geneva then could offload some of the expense for our downtown to neighboring communities like Batavia or St. Charles that use our parking. And what would be the anticipated revenue that could be generated there, and would that be significant enough to go through that exercise that the mayor's outlined?
You know, I think that would probably require further study with RTA and the Metro specifically to understand what the actual demand is. The challenge you have is you have two types of lots. You have the daily lots and you have the fee lots. The rates are relatively low, so it's not a high burden for doing kind of parking there. The challenge right now is that with the demand low, I don't know whether increasing that, you know, rate necessarily makes a difference relative to encouraging more individuals to come and use the lot in order to kind of drive activity.
But if you're, if you're using the services, what are your alternatives? Do you have your wife drop you off every day from St. Charles?
There was-
I'm just saying, I think it's an option that I was surprised I didn't see it as a recommendation.
Yeah, that-
Yeah, I mean, look, I, as, there's, I'm a planner by studying trade, and there's a book that's famous among planners. It's called No Free Parking. So, I mean, every planner read that in planning school, and that's something that probably most of us believe. So, it can be a tool, right? I think that is something that, from our findings, it's something that probably wouldn't be extremely popular with about eighty percent of our respondents saying that they, you know, wouldn't want to be paying for the structured parking. But, you know, it's, it's a tool-
When they write Metro and there's a rate increase, they probably don't like it, but they pay it.
Yeah.
Right?
Definitely.
No, I'm just saying, I guess I'd be interested in what kind of revenue we could generate with the graduated scale, if we raised it fifty cents or a dollar. And, you know, I think it would be significant enough that it could be a consideration to getting our accounting in line here as it relates to all this. And if they come to Geneva to have access to our beautiful businesses, our restaurants, et cetera, there's a price should be associated with it. Just kidding. Thank you.
Alderperson Palmquist.
Yes, thank you. I just have a brief comment. I appreciate the thoroughness and options that were laid out and a candid assessment of where we're at. I've looked, been looking at how certain aspects of our level of service could be elevated, and now I better understand the challenges of where we're at with status quo, doesn't leave us just, you know, buttons to push without some other changes to happen, so that just helps me frame my perspective and the role just leaves a little, a little farther.
Glad to help. And Alderperson Palmquist probably read the same book you did, Mr. Morris.
Absolutely. That's why I have six bikes in my garage.
Anyone else for these gentlemen? We will entertain a motion to accept their support. Please be advised-
Alderperson, Mayor?
Oops.
Bowring.
Oh, forgive me, Alderperson Bowring, and then Alderperson Mayor, I'll ask you as well. Thank you very much. Alderperson Bowring, the floor is yours.
Sorry, I switched out so that hopefully that audio on this works. Thank you so much. I really enjoyed the presentation and that fascinating report. I noted that you made the point, sorry, I hope you were able to hear me?
Yes.
Yes? Yes, okay, great. Sorry, did a ding in my ear. I noted that you said several times that, you know, we have limited tools for addressing the infrastructure and service needs, let alone like service improvements that are desired in the downtown, and I was curious, do home rule communities have more tools at their disposal? I'm assuming they would be able, if they imposed a sales tax increase, that they would be able to dedicate funds from that to issues like these?
In theory, home rule does give you greater flexibility around sales taxes and instituting greater sales taxes. I would say in this case, because the tool that we recommend would be the business district, that comes with the capacity to have a geographically specific sales tax associated with it. So it's, you have some flexibility there even without home rule status.
Okay. Well, that's good to hear. And then it sounds like, and this does seem pretty significant, that as compared to 2013, when this was last seriously contemplated, there is more general interest amongst the business community in exploring this at least?
Yes, from the conversations that we had during our stakeholder interviews and with the steering committee, there was, I would say, curiosity about, about an additional levy and the business district. The fact that the business district was complementary and wasn't something that the business owners would be paying directly was what piqued some of the business owners' interest on that one.
Okay, well, curiosity is a great place to start, certainly. That's all I have for now, but I really appreciated the presentation and the report. Thank you.
Thank you for your question.
Alderperson Mayor, any questions or comments for Mr. Stark or Mr. Morris?
Just a couple of comments. I thought the report was very interesting, and I think it's going to be a great reference tool for us. So thank you very much for that, and I just want to go on record as disagreeing with Alderperson Kilburg about raising parking rates. I'm an everyday commuter, and I would not appreciate that. So add me to the column that says no on that front. Thank you very much.
Anyone else on the dais? Is there a motion to accept the report as presented? Motion by Kassarok.
Second.
Seconded by Pashki. All in favor, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Mayor, aye.
Alderperson Bowring.
Bowring, aye. Sorry, I said it at the same time as Amy.
Thank you both very, very much.
Thank you very much.
And we can get ahold of you via our Community Development Department and-
Absolutely. Happy to answer any questions.
Okay, we'll see you at three oh two. Are you taking the train home tonight, Mr. Morris?
That's right.
What train are you going to catch?
I think there's one at eight forty-seven or so.
Come on, stick around, we'll see if you can miss that. Item number eight tonight is municipal bills for payment. We kindly ask our city clerk to read the bills in their aggregate for our consideration.
Municipal bills for payment total three million, six hundred, forty-five thousand, five hundred, ninety-nine dollars and eighty-seven cents.
Is there a motion to approve?
So moved, Mr. Mayor. I move we approve and pay the bills as read, the individual items, which can be found in tonight's city council packet on the city's website.
Alderperson Malakie makes the motion to pay the bills as presented, which are available in the city councils, city council members packets and on the city's website. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Pashki. City clerk, please take the roll.
Malakie?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Mayor, aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Reineke?
Aye.
Bowring?
Bowring, aye.
Furnish?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarok?
Aye.
With ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, zero council members absent, the bills have been approved for payment. We jump to item ten, item ten A specifically. Consider resolution twenty twenty-five dash one thirty-seven rejecting the bid opened October sixth, twenty twenty-five for Geneva substation racking device. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Marx, seconded by Malakie. Oh, forgive me, Palmquist, forgive me. Ms. Boyd.
Thank you. The item before you this evening is to reject a bid. Only one bid was received for this. It was over budget, so staff is preparing to modify the scope of the project and then rebid, and we do have superintendent who will hear if there are additional questions.
Are there any questions for the superintendent? If not, city clerk, please take the roll.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Mayor, aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Reineke?
Aye.
Bowring?
Bowring, aye.
Furnish?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarok?
Aye.
Malakie?
Aye.
Resolution twenty twenty-five dash one thirty-seven rejecting the bid as detailed has been approved with ten affirmative votes, zero nay votes, and zero council members absent. Item ten B is to consider resolution twenty twenty-five dash one thirty-eight restating and extending the site plan approval granted by resolution twenty twenty-three dash one twenty for a second time for the construction of a proposed five thousand square foot, single-story commercial building and associated site improvements for the property located between six oh two and six twenty-six East State Street, otherwise known as Connaught Dentistry. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Motion by Marx?
Seconded.
Seconded by Kilburg, excuse me. Ms. Boyd.
Thank you. The item before you this evening, the original site plan was approved by the city council in twenty twenty-three for the property located between six oh two and six twenty-six East State Street. An extension was granted in twenty twenty-four that expires at the end of this month, so the property owner has requested a second extension in order to be granted another year to begin on this project. The Geneva zoning ordinance specifies that site plans are good for one year unless a building permit has been issued and construction has commenced. There was, there were, there was a question related to this item in the council packet as well, and then we do have Director DeGroot if there are additional questions.
Questions for the director, Mr. DeGroot. If not, city clerk, please take the roll on the resolution, you know, twenty twenty-five dash one thirty-eight.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Mayor, aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Reineke?
Aye.
Bowring?
Bowring, aye.
Furnish?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Kassarok?
Aye.
Malakie?
Aye.
With a vote of ten in the affirmative, zero in the negative, and zero council members absent, resolution twenty twenty-five dash one thirty-eight has been approved. We are now at public comment, item eleven. We invite anyone to share their thoughts or comments with the city council. We invite you to join us at the podium. If your last name requires spelling, please do so. Your address is optional. The floor is open. Yes, sir.
I'd like to first introduce Chris Wallace with App Properties, a local real estate extraordinaire agent. Anyway, he joined our board a couple of years ago. Been a wonderful addition.
Fully paid on parking tickets as well.
Just a couple of things. I don't know if anybody has noticed, but Public Works has been putting up some holiday decorations this week and late last week. We certainly do thank the Public Works Department for all of their efforts. For those of you that don't know, the chamber through proceeds from the House tours pays for those greens that then the city Public Works so wonderfully puts them up for us, makes our town look as beautiful as it does. Speaking of the House tour and the Christmas walk, that is coming up real soon here. We've got Friday, the fifth of December, we're going to have the tree lighting ceremony, the presentation of the first candy cane to Mayor Burns, and Saint Nick's arrival. We also have then the House tour itself going on on Friday, the fifth, as well as on Saturday, the sixth. And as always, we are always looking for volunteers to sit at the homes while we welcome all of these visitors coming to Geneva and enjoying a great time. I do also want to bring you, make you aware of something new going on. The Geneva Chamber of Commerce, in conjunction with the Geneva Dining Alliance, is going to be having their Holiday Spirits Walk coming up. This is a program that is going to happen between Black Friday, Thanksgiving, and Christmas Eve, and what we are requesting is, is that people will come and visit any one of twenty participating venues in town, restaurants in town. The whole purpose is to get people to come to a place that they otherwise have not been to before. If a participant visits four places, then they can enter their card into a raffle drawing to win one of four prize baskets. This is a new program, just one of the many new things that we're trying to introduce to just make Geneva just one little bit better. Any questions on it?
Thank you both.
All right.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, we'll, oh, Kristen, of course, forgive me for not recognizing you. Welcome.
Hi, my name is Kristen Cornelio. For those who don't know, I've been working in downtown Geneva since I was nineteen, so over twenty years, and I am the owner of Kristen Holly, and so I just wanted to personally thank everyone here for helping with the new Destination Geneva grant for Autumn Fest Geneva that was on October fourth. With that, it allowed me to do so many new things that I had not been able to do before. And this year, we had a record number of ninety-one local Geneva merchants that participated, putting out pumpkin displays for locals and visitors to enjoy. Last year, we had twenty-one hundred votes. This year, we had four thousand and eight votes. I normally have the QR code for a free site because I've always tried to be conservative on the spending for it. This festival, this one-day event, is coordinated completely by myself, and it crashed about five minutes before the end of the event, so I will spend the fifty dollars and have unlimited votes. That's almost double. I never anticipated that. We had perfect weather. It was actually really hot that day, if anyone that did attend, so people were joking that instead of Autumn Fest, it was Summer Fest. But I did want to share, when you voted on the QR code for the last three years for data for businesses, over fifty percent were not from Geneva that came to our community. And then they asked how they heard about it, and it was honestly, a lot was- And then they asked how they heard about it, and it was honestly, a lot was word-of-mouth and social media. I did compete. Batavia in Geneva had their high school football game that night, so I was really nervous that it wouldn't be successful. But I think it's a different audience, or either the older kids went to that, and then the parents with the younger kids attended that evening. And a couple of businesses wanted me to share with you the success they experienced at from the event. Every year, for the past seven years, I have done it for, from 5 to 8, to encourage people to shop and dine. Many of the merchants close at 5 o'clock, so they stay open later for people to come to our town and experience places. Dodson Place had outdoor courtyard games. They said they had over 400 kids come by, and how they calculated that is they did a cute little like bingo card, and each game that they went in front of the different businesses in Dodson, they did a little stamp on it. So that's how they had that data to supply with us. They worked in conjunction with Anastasia, Liz and Kate, Storybook Cafe, Parla, and The Alchemist. They all stayed open late, handing out candy and toys as well as outdoor games. The outdoor games were provided by Prime IV that's located just across, but she brought everything over, so it was more safer for children to go around without crossing the streets for it. Cocoon handed out over 500 helium balloons, and their store was busy till the end of the event. Country Naturals said they stayed open till 8:30 and had Saturday number sales in the four-hour window. I extended it this year to 4 o'clock because that was the feedback I got from some businesses that they would love it to start a little earlier, and that seemed to help a lot with sales. Nemec Brothers gave out over 300 slices of free pizza. Cravings did individual goodie bags. They did over 150. The Gather Bakery did complimentary sugar cookie decorations for families. They said they were slammed and their floors were covered with sprinkles, but it was worth it. Harvey's Tales hosted a local author to do a meet-and-greet on their patio, and they had Saturday number sales, and just from 4 to 8, they had a full Saturday number sales that day. The Royal Run said they had Saturday number sales, and that they stayed open late, and they had a free experience for kids, and they extended an extra half an hour because they didn't want to turn families away from the patiently waiting kids. The last thing I wanted to say about it is, for those that didn't know, last Christmas, my dad was diagnosed with cancer, and so this year was something that I wanted to honor him. And so I just, with the grant, it allowed me to do so many more things. He passed away two days before his 70th birthday, so I was able to do something I wanted to just give back because I learned my love for community from my dad. And each gift bag I put around in different participating shops, so when someone made a purchase, whether they were dining or going to a retail shop, after they made their purchase, I had requested they hand a bag to someone, not knowing. A lot of stores had about two of them, and then I handwrote thank you cards, just saying thank you for coming to Geneva and supporting our small businesses. So it just really meant a lot for your guys' support and to honor my dad properly, and just do something that he was kind of there in his own way. So I just, I know that like, sending a thank you card is one thing, but I just wanted to fully extend my appreciation for your support on it, and I'm just like amazed. It started off in 2018 with 40 businesses and now at 91, so it's grown at a nice level that I can control, but also I learn a lot from the businesses that participate, so I am really appreciative. And that's, and that's all I wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you.
If not, new business from the dais. Anyone has any new business to share with the community? Alderperson Kilburg?
Just a few things I wanted to touch on. Mr. Wilson mentioned the Christmas walk that will be with us shortly. The Geneva History Museum had an excellent presentation last Tuesday afternoon on the history of the Christmas walk, and if you get an opportunity, you can go online and watch that at the History Museum site, and it traces Christmas in Geneva back to post Civil War. And the actual Christmas walk commenced in 1976, and the mayor looked quite different in 2002 when he's in some of the photographs.
Oh, hell, really?
Yeah.
Oh, God.
Also, two ribbon cuttings this week. We welcome a new business at 318, and we wish them well, and we also have a Brazilian restaurant that's come to Geneva now on the south end of Third Street that had their ribbon cutting this last week, and I think those are two exciting businesses that are going to offer Geneva residents a lot of opportunities for some coffee and steak, I guess, if that's your, if that's your preference. Also, I want to thank the downtown businesses for the trick-or-treat that they provided to the community. We didn't mention that last meeting, but anyone that was downtown, it looked like it was the Christmas walk because the streets were packed, and it was a real excellent gesture on the part of our downtown businesses in, in bringing our young people during daylight hours to the downtown and treating them with some really fantastic treats, actually. And then finally, I wanted to mention a, an event as we, as we approached Thanksgiving. St. Peter's Church, last Friday evening, hosted 300 underprivileged in our community that are going through difficult times, either possibly at Hesse House or Lazard House, or just going through unemployment or difficulties in their lives. And this was an excellent opportunity for them to get out with family and to enjoy a steak and lobster dinner. And the response was, was excellent, and the, the support from the community was incredible as well, so that's all I had, Mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Alderperson Palmquist?
Can I quickly just piggyback on one comment from Alderperson Kilburg? I also, on Friday, stopped in to say hello and welcome to the new restaurant in the 302, or 318 space and got a chance to speak with the general manager for a while, and I asked, how was the city to work with? And he was very complimentary of the building department. That was one thing I wanted to follow up with him on, and he was very pleased that they got everything through very efficiently and professionally, so that's like the most fundamental way we can support businesses, making sure that that permitting process goes smoothly and can keep them on their schedule, so keep that, keep up the good work there, building department.
Thank you. Anyone else? If not, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn the city council meeting. Motion by Kasarog. All in favor of adjourned, please indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. We'll take just a moment before the committee of the whole meeting.
Okay, we're ready to start? I'd like to call our committee of the whole meeting for Monday, November 17th. Order, my name is Dean Kilburg. Let the record show that we have eight aldermen present, two are joining us by, by phone. First item of business, approve special committee of the home minutes from October 22nd and October 27th, and the regular committee of the home minutes from November 3rd. Is there a motion to approve?
No.
Okay. Moved by Malakie, seconded by Pashke. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? It's unanimous. Items of business for this evening. Item A, considered draft ordinance abating taxes levied for general obligation refunding bonds, waterworks, and sewage, sewage alternate revenue source, series 2021A, B. And then also, well, we'll take this one individually. Ms. Voight, if you would, is, do we have a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Marx, seconded by Kasarog. Ms. Voight?
Thank you. The item before you, the ordinance, the city annually abates taxes for various bond issues using electric and wastewater revenues, which are mainly comprised of user fees. This annual process removes the debt service payments from the property tax bill and requires the bonds to be paid from the user fees collected in the electric and water sewer funds. And then we do have Director Maluski here if there are any additional questions.
Okay, this is the abatement of about $4.2 million. That will give some property tax relief for taxpayers. I think a vote would be adequate for item A. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
It's unanimous. Excuse me, we need to take their voice votes over the phone as well.
Bowring, aye.
Did we hear both of them adequately? Councils in agreement?
Mayor, aye.
Okay. Item B, consider draft ordinance abating taxes levied for general obligation bonds alternate revenue source, series 2024. Ms. Voight, this is repetitious, but go ahead if you'd like. We need a motion, yes?
So moved. Seconded.
Moved by Palmquist, seconded by Marx.
Thank you. I was going to state that the explanation is the same for this item, and we do still have Director here if there are additional questions.
Okay, any questions? If not, no, go ahead. Kasarog?
Really simple question. I know these are probably legal forms, essentially, but is there any way to include, like in parentheses, like SSA number 15 Eagle Brook on those actual notices or whatever that we have to send to the county? Or is that like, format it not allowed? I think it would be easier for people to consume it and if they were looking in the packet, if you just look at that and then you got a cross-reference of somebody else, what SSA do I live in? I think it's difficult, so that's, that was my only question.
Yeah, I can definitely do that, and just to be clear, we were talking about the abatements.
Yes.
On, okay.
Oh, I am?
Yes.
Shoot. Okay, well.
I'm gonna sit right here.
We'll get it out of you. Done. Thank you, sorry.
Any, any questions? If not, I take we're prepared to vote. Those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
I take it it's unanimous?
Aye.
Yes.
Bowring, aye.
They both said aye.
Good. We've got it. Okay, we, we're, item 3C, consider draft ordinances for estimated 2025 tax levies. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Marx.
Seconded.
Seconded by Malakie. Ms. Voight?
Thank you. This ordinance is an estimate of the City of Geneva tax levy for 2025 based on the county estimated EAV, the current year's CPI, which is 2.9%, plus the estimated value of new growth in the city. The final levy will come before the city council on December 15, 2025. There is a memo with additional details attached to the executive summary, and that also provides the timeline for the public hearing process, and Director Maluski is here if there are any questions.
My question is lost.
Noted. We will make those changes for.
Thank you very much.
Okay, the tax rate for all properties in the City of Geneva will decrease from .4779 to .4575, which is a 3.2, it's a 3.25% decrease from last year. We have no control over the EAV. Okay. Item D.
Do you vote?
Oh, those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Bowring, aye.
It's unanimous.
Mayor, aye.
Okay. Item D, continued discussion of facilities master plan implementation. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Moved by Marx.
Seconded.
Seconded by Pashke. Ms. Voight?
Thank you, Chairperson. So this evening, this is a continuation of our ongoing discussions related to the implementation of the facilities master plan for the city. Most recently, on November 3rd, the council reviewed the sample ballot question options. This is as it pertains to, we're contemplating a referendum in March to fund the police facility. We reviewed two questions at that meeting. At the end of that meeting, the council felt it would be helpful to have individuals involved in this process here this evening to provide a bit more of an overview of the process as it relates to the facilities component. So we do have FGM Architects, we have Leopardo here, we also have our communications consultant who was requested just based on the background information pertaining to the two ballot questions. And then we also have Anthony from Spear Financial, and he can answer questions related to the bond, if that's the path the council chooses to take. So this evening, just as a recap, while we do have individuals from different organizations here, what the council, what we're moving towards as a council is to determine if we do go to referendum in March, which path does the council wish to take? A bond referendum or the home rule referendum? So while we'll have presentations and get to see where we are with the police station, the item that we're working towards consensus-wise is just the path forward as far as a referendum. Timing-wise, the council, we had previously discussed that this evening, if consensus could be reached, the council could vote on December 1st. If consensus, if the council needs more time, we do have the option to take that vote at the December 15 meeting, but the deadline for a referendum question is in December. So hopefully, the information this evening will be helpful for the council and any interested community members, so we can bring up FGM to start. That will work. We do also, again, have Colin from EO Sullivan and Anthony from Spear Financial, but FGM does have some renderings specific to the police facility project.
Dave Yandel with FGM Architects with my colleague Maggie Krieger, and Jeff and Lee from Leopardo, our partners who have been assisting us with the cost information. I've got kind of an update to a presentation that was made earlier, so I'm going to go fairly quickly through some of the slides that I believe most of you have seen, and then I've got a couple of updates on some of the discussion items that came out of the last presentation. So again, this was an agenda that was developed for this preliminary presentation, really touching on the overarching goals for the facilities master plan, which is kind of getting us to the step that got us here tonight, but it's really about serving the community and maintaining exceptional services for each department. In the facilities master plan, we talked about capital improvements for the fire department, city hall and the potential library redevelopment, Public Works, all with specific needs, but then focusing specifically on the police department with some, as a potential first step. We had looked at options for potential redevelopment downtown on the existing site, but then we also looked at a lot of sites within the City of Geneva, predominantly city-owned sites to simplify the process for moving forward in a timely manner. We developed test-fit plans for a lot of those options and ended up looking at the existing city-owned South Street, Public Works kind of property currently occupied by some Park District ballfields. In doing such, this would allow us to address some of the public work concerns, predominantly with access to, access and security to a lot of the equipment and materials that are stored outside currently, developing kind of a city campus here on the south part of town. A lot of design considerations went into a concept development at this early phase, stewardship, maintaining the historic character of the city, really, you know, celebrating the past, but, you know, looking forward, you know, with these newer developments, including universal design, fully accessible, kind of beyond just ADA. We want to make sure that these facilities are accessible to all, that there's an equity built into these facilities, that the occupants are treated with, you know, fresh air, fresh light, daylight, all the things that make for a healthy workspace, as well as a safe workspace. We're looking at facilities that are resilient to both man-made and natural threats. You guys are obviously in kind of tornado alley here for a new police station. A storm shelter is code required at this point, that's relatively newer, but being able to share that facility with Public Works or other community members. able to share that facility with public works or other community members and looking forward to other developments in which we're making occupants safe in their workplace. Resiliency is just that. It's sustainability, it's durable, it's easy to maintain, it's facilities that are gonna last for 50 years or more. We did a program analysis and we kind of, when we kicked off this concept phase, we did a deeper dive with the police department to look at kind of what they're, comparing their existing program to what a base scope, really kind of their must-do items, with a couple of alternates which will allow for growth as, more flexible spaces as funds become available. So we're looking at facilities that range from about 45,000 square feet to 67,000 square feet. The two that I have highlighted in red are the ones that we've been focusing a little bit more in terms of alternates, and they're tied to training and wellness, and that's really tied to the indoor firing range and some other spaces. And then what we're calling warm storage are the indoor parking. And it's the amount of indoor parking that we may want to make available to really protect the assets that are the squad vehicles. They're fundamentally rolling computers, keeping them safe, extending the life of those assets that you invest hundreds of thousands of dollars in, and, you know, making, allowing them for a quick response during inclement weather is really a key part of that indoor storage. So here's the existing site plan on the South Street campus, and what we're looking at right now is a one-story police station. And then on the south side, you can kind of see, with public parking up front, a new realigned entrance aligning with the street to the north, so creating a four-way stop potentially, or at least a T-shaped intersection, a more secure police entry on the east, and then as you can see, the squad garage and the range, this is being kind of shown as a full build-out scenario, but there is options to do that in phases or as potential alternates. We're also showing kind of secure parking with the black line that identifies kind of a fence line. That fence line could be extended over the public works area to help, you know, protect that and provide secure parking on that side of the campus as well. The proposed floor plan for the base scope really shows kind of two, well, actually kind of four main zones, and the color codes kind of tie back to certain functions within the building. The kind of yellow in the upper left is training, the main entrance to the building, the public side, training, community training room and meeting space, records and social services. The blue on the upper right is investigations, administration and patrol, kind of the heart and soul of the police station. The green and gray in the middle are the support spaces, whether it's locker rooms, mechanical spaces, other training and fitness spaces, and then purple kind of outlines the detention areas that are inherent with the police station. When we look at alternate one, adding indoor parking garage, this is for about 10 to 15 cars or squad vehicles or specialty vehicles keeping them inside, and a small range, what we're calling the small range, which is kind of a standard width of four lanes wide and 75 feet long, that allows for basic training, kind of the mandated state-required training for, for firing. And then the alternate two is a larger squad garage, 20 to 24 cars, that would accommodate the full fleet of squad vehicles keeping them inside, and then a larger range, which provides a greater range of flexibility for a wider variety of training exercises. Oh my gosh, this might be the, this is the right one. I thought I had more slides in here. Anyway, a couple, and they might be coming up after, sorry. A couple of design options that we presented. We went through a variety of scenarios with the police department and kind of arrived on this scheme. It doesn't mean it's the final scheme, it's the one that we're showing now that really kind of conveys the overall aesthetic for the new police station. We're showing it in two color schemes, kind of a cream, a lighter colored cream brick with kind of darker accents on the metals and windows. And then we're showing kind of an opposite iron spot brick, which is kind of like a dark rich brown with kind of lighter scheme. So it's a way that really kind of conveys a sense of permanence in slightly different approaches. There's no right or wrong. An overall view looking back towards kind of the public works, looking back towards the southwest, showing the public parking up front and that main entrance, kind of the higher roof area designates the more communities-focused spaces. As you look a little bit closer, as you start to arrive towards the building, you can see the wing, up front, the lower wing is the police spaces, again, with the canopy space with the columns, really, you know, creating a municipal presence, really giving a strong municipal sense. And then as you can move closer to the entrance, really open and welcoming, really showing a level of transparency to what's inside. Different views around, looking straight on, coming from the opposite corner from the public work side, as you're driving in the site entry, and then kind of, pardon me, a close-up of the office wing. And the other thing that we noticed as we were doing some studies is that this elevation faces north, so it doesn't get a lot of direct sunlight, but it gets different angles of the sun, both in the morning, kind of midday, and in the evening. So some perforations in the roof structure really help to kind of activate that front elevation, so it's not always kind of in darkness. It really creates a little bit of visual interest and provides some natural light as you're looking to the north. But also facing north, having those larger expanses of glass, they won't be as exposed to thermal heat load, you know, than that direct solar gain. The bigger spaces, the big box spaces like the parking garage and the range would take on the majority of that. So here's the second option with the iron spot brick. You can see slightly darker tones overall, but very similar approach, slightly different aesthetic as you kind of move closer to the building, kind of the same studies looking at the different sun angles during the day, and different views as you walk around the building, and then just kind of a side-by-side comparison of the front entrance. So we talked about the potential alternates, and so this is a view of the existing parking at the police station. They've got the two kind of overhead doors on the south side of the building. They've got facility, you know, vehicles crammed in, not a lot of room to walk around, and you've got some additional storage you can see in yellow boxes on the side, basically lining all three sides of the garage space. Not the most efficient. What we'd be considering is a wide variety of options as we talk about alternates. On the left-hand side is a police station that we've done recently where the vast majority of the parking was outside and kind of the days, or that shift is underneath cover. So as those vehicles are protected before they go out to shift, and then those parking spots can shift. On the right-hand side is a project that FGM and Leopardo recently completed for the Village of Donner's Grove. It's kind of a hybrid. In the background, kind of in the upper right where you see that overhead door, they've got indoor parking for about a dozen vehicles, so that's about one shift's worth, and then the other vehicles are parked underneath that canopy, which does have a solar array as it faces directly south, and kind of is a hybrid scenario. As you get closer to having more indoor parking, on the left is an indoor-covered garage, but it's open to the elements. There's no heating or cooling, it's got open garage, there's no garage doors at the end, and those openings on the right-hand side are open to the elements. But, so it's kind of three-quarters of the way there. And then on the right, you can see a fairly standard indoor parking facility that is protected from the elements, tempered for winter conditions, and provides the ultimate level of protection for the vehicles. And again, that can be sized accordingly. So those are some of the alternates that we would consider as we move forward. And then for the indoor training range, again, on the left, you can see a fairly standard range, that kind of that four-lane width. The biggest difference between a police training range and a more commercial range or something you might see on TV is that there's no fixed stations. You know, there's not those booths that you stand in. Their, police training is really looking for scenario training. There is a straight-line shooting that's required, but, and they can set up temporary stands if they need to, or maybe have a table to work from. But a lot of it is more so like the training on the right where they're looking at different scenarios. They need a little bit more width to work through the different options and movements. On the left, you can see a range that's sized at that kind of eight-lane range, and it's got an overhead door that allows you to bring vehicles in where you can do different scenarios and different training scenario and different mockups. And as you can see on the right, they're doing movement drills here, and you've got kind of two training, two training partners. Typically, training is done with a student and a trainee kind of guiding them through the process here, but now you can see they're doing movement drills and they've got a little bit more width to work with, a little bit more challenging in the, in the newer ranges. So those are some of the options that we're looking at. We thought the visuals would help a little bit as it was kind of a topic of conversation when we were together last. And so we, with that, the other follow-up is really talking about costs and providing updated costs here today. So as we mentioned, we're done with the facilities' master plan where we provided very high-level cost information. Here are the concept. We're starting to dial in a little bit closer. We've got a little bit more drawn. We've got a saying, "The more you draw, the more you learn." So we're drawing more and more each day, and we're learning a little bit more and more each day about one of the things that are out there. And the other thing is that FGM does a lot of these types of projects. We do a lot of these projects with Leopardo, so that there's a depth of knowledge that we have. We're not just grabbing this out of thin air. This is based on current and recent projects. So recapping a little bit, what's this going to cost? Our estimates are broken into two main categories. It's hard costs, which is really the bricks and mortar construction, the contractor's general conditions, the contractor's insurance, there's escalation, we're trying to predict the cost of materials for once we go out to bid, and then there's a construction contingency for what we call unforeseen conditions. And then there's the owner's soft costs, which is things like due diligence, testing inspections, doing geotechnical investigations, doing the topographic survey before we get started, professional fees, testing inspections, as I mentioned, FF and E, and then there's a project contingency that we typically carry, again, to help mitigate risk in the long term. We don't know how bids are gonna come in, we don't know what else might be out there in terms of asks. And so pricing is still a little conservative here. We used the analogy last time that the difference between hard costs and soft costs is if you flip the building upside down and anything that shakes out, and this is funnier when you do it on the PowerPoint, but basically if you flip the building upside down and anything that shakes out falls under the soft costs. Anything that's really screwed to the floor is something that we consider hard cost. So we want to make sure that we're consistent with our vocabulary as we're talking about the council and the public, so we can get a better understanding when we start to talk about comparisons. So this is the updated cost slide, and while I, we asked the Leopardo team for options, they did, they over-delivered. So there's a lot up here, and I'll try to go through it fairly straightforward. So at the very top is the base scope, which includes a small indoor parking component, but no range. And that's the fundamental kind of 45,000-square-foot must-do component that we talked about earlier, and we've got a project cost right there of about $46.1 million. The add for a medium range, or I'm sorry, a medium garage, which is parking for 10 to 15 vehicles, which again accommodates kind of a full shift's worth of vehicles and some of the specialties, that's about a $3 million, a $3.5 million add. And then to go to a large garage, kind of a full build-out of 20 to, 22 to 24 vehicles, that's about a $6.8 million add, and that gets you up to 52, just shy of $53 million. So that's kind of if you just wanted to do the garage or the base scope in a certain-sized garage indoor component without a range. The middle piece is four, five, and six is if you didn't want to, I'm sorry, four and five are if you didn't want a garage, but you just wanted to add a range, and those have similar prices of about $4 to $6 million on top of the original, $4 to $8 million on top of your base bid cost. And then the last for six, seven, eight, and nine are combinations of medium garage and small range, large garage and small range, medium garage, large range, uptight over there, sorry, medium garage and small range, I should say, and then large garage and large range. So that's kind of the full range there. What's not clearly evident there, and I'll just give it to you real quick, the medium garage, as I mentioned, is about a $3.5 million add. The large garage is about a $6.8 million add from the base scope. The small range is $4 million, and the larger range at $7.9 million. And as we mentioned and we've talked about, we don't need to decide that today per se because there, we're trying to get you as much police station as you want to afford with the program that is correct for your police department. So deciding what you want and how much you want to spend, hopefully within this range somewhere, will help direct the next steps as we move forward. And as we mentioned, carrying these as bid alternates, we can design the medium range, but we can also design the large range, and if the prices come in favorably, you can get what you want. And that's for the range, the garage. And there's some other elements within the program, such as the size of the community room, other features that may want to be desired within there. Each one of those kind of program lines probably has some level of small alternative we'll consider as we move forward. The other topic is kind of comparable projects. Quite a bit of discussion about, you know, why is this so much more expensive? And it's an excellent question. We've been living through a very unique economy over the last five or six years. Probably the most talked about one is the St. Charles Police Department, which was a project that FGM Architects was associated with back when it was constructed, similar kind of, at 56,000 square feet, it's about in that midsize range of the options that we are showing. With the construction cost of $24.6 million escalated, that's about $33 million now. If you go all the way down to the Geneva Police, we're looking at about $34 to $35 million for, you know, slightly smaller facility is kind of that base bid price. Other projects, but as, when you compare it to other projects that we're currently working on that are projected to go out to bid in a similar timeframe, you can see we're fairly well-aligned. The challenges with comparing is it's not apples to apples, it's really apples to oranges. The fundamental building of the police station is fairly similar, but there's unique programs for every department. Every department is unique. Really where the challenges are, are site development. No two sites are alike, what's underground is alike, site utilities, other options. But the economy itself has been a big part of it, too. When we talk about escalation and comparison costs, this is a construction cost index over the last 15 years, and you can kind of see where St. Charles was, they almost built during the perfect storm of terrific economic conditions, and we've seen quite a bit of an uptick now over the last five, six years, and it's just kind of the nature of the industry. And as we talk about escalation and the cost of delaying decisions, this line rarely, if ever goes down, it consistently goes up. We are seeing it even out a little bit more. We saw, you know, we were seeing 6%, 7%, 8% escalation and inflation over that kind of midspan there. It is starting to reconcile a little bit back into that 3%, 4%, 5% range. We've talked about schedule. If we do get a notice proceed in second quarter after a potential spring referendum, we'd be able to move fairly quickly. The goal would be to be bidding, wrapped up with construction documents and bidding by the end of 2026, ready to break ground in the spring of '27, and it would take about 12 to 15 months to get that constructed and open for second quarter of '28. This is just one schedule. There's lots of options out there, you know, but this is kind of a general ballpark to get people oriented to the timeline. And with that, we kind of wrapped up with kind of what our next steps are. It's our intention, based on any comments back from tonight, to provide a draft of the concept report for the police station by next week for review as a draft, and that will kind of help answer any additional questions. In addition to the images and the cost estimate that you've seen, there is a, about a 60 or 80-page document that helps support some of the direction that we've received to date, summarizes the program, summarizes some of the design parameters that we're working under, and that really helps the Leopardo team put cost to it outside of just like, I'm gonna price that pretty picture. So with that, we're open to any questions.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the FGM group for being here with us this evening as well. Any questions? How about remotely, Amy or Nace?
No, I don't have any comments.
Is that Amy?
Thank you, Dean, and thanks to FGM for the presentation.
I don't have any questions or comments at this time either, but again, thank you.
Okay. Anyone with us here present that has questions? No questions?
Wow. Chairperson.
Well, we're sticking around if anything comes up.
Well, if I may, we do also have Anthony and Colin here. I know those were the communications and the, the bond pieces. They don't have specific presentations, but they're here.
No. Yeah, let's try to get our arms around the, the station itself before we talk about bonding. Is that okay with the council? Let's stay focused on just that piece while we have FGM with us. Does anyone have any preference? And I guess we're looking for a preference.
No.
I mean.
No.
Okay. I, I mean, is there anything about the structure itself that you have questions about or why that might be best suited for Geneva?
I, I think the goal of having FGM here was, as we're talking about a potential bond, it's helpful for people to be able to understand the different pieces of the architectural and construction components. There will be other opportunities to.
Okay.
To determine what is best facility-wise for the community. This is best facility-wise for the community. This is just information as the council is making decisions.
Okay, it's all information. The ten was information.
Correct, correct. We don't need to vote on this at all.
We're not voting on anything. I just, I guess, if we have questions about what was presented this evening, that's where I was headed.
Thank you. Yeah, I came in with a question of what could be done as alternates to be able to help us understand. So I really appreciated the slide that actually took that to another level from what I was going to ask or explore on what could be alternates. That was very helpful. Will help us make those decisions. And some of them don't have to be made precisely by virtue of alternates that you explained. And the design, thank you for designing it such that it could be simple to bid it as, bid these features as alternates. Sometimes it's not always that way, where you try to do alternatives. Well, then that really changes things. So. And then just from the standpoint of square foot cost, it seems like it's a fairly utilitarian approach. I don't see anything unless you want to point out something that was a little bit extra, either in the facade materials or whatever. But I think it's basic program from going through the needs and trying to match the scope with where we're at and what we see in the future, if you have any comment on that.
Right. As I kind of mentioned fairly quickly, we're looking at durable materials that are easy to maintain. We're not looking at any custom materials or anything that would not be easy to replace. And that includes, you know, standard colors for metalwork, standard brick colors, standard brick shapes. What we pride ourselves is finding unique ways to use standard materials, use things in creative ways, but making sure that they're easy to maintain and durable is probably the biggest challenge, or biggest opportunity for creative, you know, liberties. Obviously, the site itself lends itself to a nice square building. We're not trying to do any gymnastics with the Downers Grove project. We are really confined because we're trying to shoehorn it in under an existing site while maintaining existing buildings. So there's a lot of freedom here with the generosity of the site. What, from a cost per square foot at this early phase, it is a little conservative. You know, some of those completed projects, those are final costs after all contingencies were reconciled and any cost savings were given back to those communities or recognized by those communities. Here at the very beginning, we're still being a little conservative with contingencies because there's still a lot of unknowns.
Were you at like 20% for your contingencies?
So right now, we've got a 5% construction contingency, a 5% project contingency, and within the construction number is a 10% design contingency. So yeah, so they're kind of different buckets. One's kind of owned by the owner, one's kind of owned by the design and construction team, and one is owned by the contractor for the duration. And I just want to note, when I showed the one slide about the stages of the cost estimate, at each of those milestones, that design contingency gets whittled down. So at design development, that might drop down to 5% because we drew more, so we know more. And then when the bidding documents are done, there's no design contingency anymore because we theoretically drew everything. So it's really down to the project contingency, which is the owners to help mitigate risk, and the construction contingency that helps the contractor mitigate risk once things get under construction.
Is there anything on this that you would have an allowance for as well, or you think between contingencies and alternates review?
Great question. Allowances is a strategy. It really depends on how the final bidding goes, but it's a great way to help manage construction in a timely, efficient manner.
Right. And so you kind of know what your cost, and you work backwards from that to then add things to start Spartan or utilitarian, and then as we need to upgrade.
Right. It's, potentially give betterments that might go back into the project once certain systems are installed and kind of that risk is, you know, mitigated.
We know upfront what that ceiling is.
Absolutely. And so that's, and I'm out over my ski tips a little bit, especially with Lee behind me, but one of the delivery methods we'd probably be recommending is a construction manager at risk with a guaranteed maximum price. And so it's deciding when you want to develop that guaranteed maximum price. Lee could probably give us a price today if you want it. But that would be filled with a lot of allowances and a lot of unknowns because she needs to manage that. So the further along you get, traditionally at the end of design development or halfway through construction documents is traditionally a time that that can happen. And it's just really working through that process with the city, if and when that time comes.
And I appreciate the process that's integrating the people who build it into the architectural process.
As do we. It's really helpful for us to understand construction trends. You know, this is a building that may want to be load-bearing masonry. It might want to be steel. It might want to be precast concrete. Understanding those current market conditions as we design and having the contractors on board as part of the process is super beneficial to the city as a whole.
And it allows you to pivot a little bit, too, based on some of the trends in real time.
Absolutely.
Thanks.
Leckie?
Yeah, really quick. Are we just general design and everything? Are you guys moving forward with looking at this as like a 30-year structure, 40-year structure?
We're looking at a 50-year structure.
Sustainability, resiliency, you know, constant, you know, review and revisement of codes and everything, you know, energy codes specifically?
That's a great question. It's also one of the, so we're looking at it a 50-year life, you know, but the superstructure probably can outlive that. Most of mechanical systems tend to have about a 20 to 25-year life these days. You know, the washing machine that you bought in the 50s doesn't quite like live up like it does anymore. So there's probably some systems that will need to be upgraded at some point, but the main core and heart of the building should have at least a 50-year life. When we talk about the energy codes, it's one of the other components that adds to the difference in cost between projects from 10 years ago, such as St. Charles. The energy codes just keep getting, rightfully so, get a little stricter and a little stricter each year. So there's a little bit more insulation in the walls. There's a little bit more meat to the building itself to provide long-term cost savings and, you know, reduce operational costs. So while it may be a higher initial first cost compared to another project from 10 years ago, your operational costs are going to be significantly less.
Sure. Okay. Yeah, that's what I was sort of wondering, too. I mean, we take that stuff into consideration, especially with how energy costs are projected to, you know, go up over the next five, 10 years.
Absolutely. And while I know you've got your own electrical utility, the opportunity for solar and giving back to the grid, you know, other renewable energy sources, geothermal is a potential consideration. There's a lot of opportunity with this project as a whole.
All right. Thank you.
Basky?
Thank you. Thank you for the information again. I was curious, you showed alternate parking solutions. Where would those fall? I mean, I assume probably less than what the estimate is for the medium or large indoor parking. I don't want to make that spreadsheet even bigger, but is there?
If you actually saw the master's spreadsheet, you would fill this room. Yes, they're somewhere in the middle there. So certainly having an unconditioned space is less expensive than a conditioned space. So we want to make sure that we're showing a wide range of options that provides, you know, and we haven't had this conversation with the police department specifically, whether they would prefer to have half the vehicles completely indoor or all the vehicles partially indoor, if that makes sense. So that type of prioritizing still needs to happen. So what we try to do is give you some prices of, like you said, kind of the small, medium, large, knowing that there's a medium, large, and a small, medium in there somewhere as well. So kind of, probably way over my ski tips here, you know, we kind of showed costs from $45 million to $60 million. So one of the questions may be how big of a referendum we want to go, knowing that we can afford some parking and potentially a range and one size of a training facility. That's where that kind of matrix in the program and the costs that are associated with it go. See, when I overstep my bounds, that's when Lee comes and...
No, I just, I thought I would just answer a quick question that I think you were driving at when, and I'm Lee McMillan from Leopardo. The question that you had, I think, was related to the photos that he had up there. And he showed like different potential ways, right? You can do partial cover. You can do full cover. You can have fully conditioned. The pricing that we've included in the alternates for the parking that were on the matrix that Dave had up just a minute ago include full enclosure tempered space. So you could crank it down from there if you wanted to, but we wanted to put in that as like a starting point. So they're all, each of them at that size are fully enclosed and heated.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Thanks, Lee. Those are remote. Any questions? No questions remotely? Okay, let's, I guess, hello? Is there someone there?
No, I said no questions. Thank you.
No questions? Okay. I guess then we take up the funding piece.
Sure. So if I may, perhaps the best way to handle it is, we do have Colin from EO Sullivan here. So the two questions on the table are bond referendum or the home rule referendum. So I think having Colin and perhaps Anthony, if there are questions specific to that, they kind of go hand in hand. So now that the council has had the opportunity to review kind of the big, high-level picture of the police facility, having any specific questions, I think, as it relates to the bond or how it would be messaged, we have our experts here.
Sure. Do you both want to come up? And then we might as well both come to the podium. And then do you have something that you're planning on presenting or just address questions, both of you?
No, sir, just questions for me.
No presentation or anything, just have to answer questions.
Any of their names?
No.
Why don't you help her with your name and who you represent?
Colin Corbett, C-O-R-B-E-T-T, with EO Sullivan Consulting.
And Anthony Miceli, M-I-C-E-L-I, Spear Financial.
Okay. We'll field questions. We'll go to those that are remote if they have any questions or any comments relating to the funding piece. We'll let you go first.
Thank you, Chair. If you don't mind, I do have one question to start off. Sorry, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great. So I guess this is for Colin. I was curious if you could go over how you would go about messaging a home rule for Geneva, if that was what we put on the, excuse me, that was what we put on the ballot.
Sure, happy to. So the key part of this is it's always going to be customized to the client and the situation. So I can give you my initial thoughts of the types of things we generally would want to bring up, but obviously this would be done in collaboration with the board and your team and the mayor. So this would all just be preliminary. But generally, the types of things you want to highlight when it comes to a home rule referendum are the sustainability of the solution. A bond path, if you were to move with that path, is obviously a one-time, solve-a-single-problem sort of approach. Whereas a home rule referendum gives you a long-term, sustainable approach to solve not just that one infrastructure challenge, but more safety, public safety issues that arise. Obviously, fire station, I think it's two or one, I think it's one, well, both, but yeah. Fire stations need work. Obviously, we talked about some safety and accessibility challenges with City Hall. So there are more needs I know that are on the horizon. And so first of all, the first thing we would highlight is the sustainability of that solution. The second thing you want to make sure you cover is the fiscal responsibility of the current administration and the board. Because for the public to give you this kind of authorization, it's going to require a high level of trust. And so making sure we emphasize how you have respected that trust to date, how you've respected their tax dollars to date, will help increase that trust and the likelihood that they're willing to take that step. You also talk about how they ultimately have the final control as members of the public because they elect the board, they elect the mayor. And so if you all in some way, obviously, we wouldn't word it this way, but betrayed that trust, they could certainly resolve that problem in the next election. And so showing that they do still have a voice in this process, that it isn't them giving up that level of control over taxation and other things. The last thing that we see highlighted in this is the fact that it can take costs for projects, should you choose to do so, and not necessarily have to put that all on property taxpayers. As a bond referendum, that is going to be a cost that's borne by property taxpayers 100%. Whereas if you were a home rule community, there certainly are other paths and avenues that you could take that wouldn't put that cost all on property taxpayers. And what we've seen is many municipalities have identified revenue streams that maybe even don't all hit residents. You might have opportunities that would generate revenue from out-of-town residents. And certainly, that's something that's beneficial to members of your community. So there's a lot we don't know, as in, you know, Sullivan, we would need to learn from you all as to what maybe would be your approach should you have home rule. But those are the types of things that should be included in messaging if you were to move forward with that potential solution.
Okay, thank you. That's a great overview. A few other things that I saw come up on other municipalities that have put home rule on the referendum. Sorry, I have to switch my... One of these days, I need to get new AirPods because they don't like to work for that long anymore. Sorry. A few other things that I've seen come up, and I'm curious whether, like, having too many things confuses the message or not, but some other things that I saw come up that seemed interesting were more, more power to come up with local solutions to unfunded mandates coming down from the state. Is that something that you guys have seen other municipalities use as part of their message when they're looking at home rule?
Yeah, local control is a big part of this. Obviously, the trust that voters have increases the more local that government is. So trust in state government, I'm not sure if that's me, trust in state government is low. Trust in other governments is low, but here as a local government, as a city, that trust tends to be high. And we saw that. I can pull up the survey results that we had when we tested the favorability. I think we tested it twice for the city, and both times it was overwhelmingly high. So clearly, there's support, there's favorability, there's trust in local government and local control here in the city. So I've definitely seen that message utilized, and it's certainly something we would evaluate as part of this process.
Okay.
Amy, is that you joining us?
Another thing that I've seen come up with some of my constituents is local control as it concerns zoning. So we've had quite a lot of utility work going on. And we even had an arborist in our ward who was noting that the way Nycor was going about storing their equipment was going to significantly damage tree roots of quite established trees. And because we're non-home rule, we can't make Nycor do anything different than they would, sorry, we can't make them follow any procedure that's not their own. Have you seen that sort of, I know that's getting kind of granular, but I feel like when people say, oh, public safety or zoning, it's a little bit hard for people to understand what that means potentially. And so, you know, so like when I see that, I'm like, okay, but what zoning or what public safety? So I can understand more easily, like, listing things like rental inspections or, you know, preserving trees in the public right-of-way. Is that something you've seen come up, too, or are we getting out into the weeds?
Yeah, I think you mentioned it in your previous question, which is, you know, does this get too much? And you just said it. Does that get too in the weeds? What we've generally seen is you want to have one solid message that hits on three key points as to what this would do for the city and its residents. Then when you talk about more granular things, like you just mentioned, that's where you have a Q&amp;A section, maybe on a website, where you say, here we'll have, you know, if you've got questions, send them in, and maybe we'll answer them here publicly so people can see them. Because what you're talking about is sort of one of those additional details that I think some people will be interested in. But for the average resident, they're going to want to know, give me the key things that I need to know before maybe I have my voice heard on something like this at the ballot box. So I think the last thing you mentioned, something that would go more in a Q&amp;A section on the site with more details versus maybe that central messaging.
Okay. That is all, so I guess I wanted to ask the Chair and/or potentially Alex, are we, are you interested in hearing where we stand on the question of what should go on the ballot? Or are we really just directing questions currently at the folks that have been gracious enough to come to the meeting tonight?
I didn't understand what you said.
So the goal of, well, if possible, the goal was to determine if there was consensus amongst the council as to how to proceed regarding a ballot question for the March referendum. You don't have to reach consensus this evening. We do have the December meetings. But that was, the goal was to get to a point where the council felt comfortable But that was, the goal was to get to a point where the council felt comfortable with creating an item that would be voted on at a future meeting. However, if consensus, if we need additional time to discuss past this meeting, we do have that option. If that answers the question.
Okay, thank you. Well, then, I will give a brief overview of my position. I think that the right way to go is to put home rule on the ballot. I think it is the right policy move for Geneva. I think, as Colin pointed out, and this is also backed up by the research I've done, this is really, this is really the way for us to get to a sustainable level of investment in our infrastructure and our facilities. I think we've seen what happens when we don't have the revenue to do that, and it's when we get things like Fire Station 2, which was built with limited revenue to a residential standard and is, you know, rapidly failing. So, I think if we're not interested in leading our community and saying, "This is the right policy for Geneva, this is what we need," then I don't know why we would spend $60 million on a police station, period. If we don't believe that we can get the residents of Geneva to see the value that we see in fixing some of our facilities, building new facilities, and, you know, upgrading them as needed, then, like, why go way out on a limb to make one nice facility if all of the rest of them are going to consign our employees to ever deteriorating conditions with no path forward to change any of that? I found a white paper that Alder Person Malachi shared with me incredibly helpful. I feel like it dispelled quite a lot of the myths about home rule. And the quote from it that I found most impactful, and this is absolutely reflected in what Colin just said, is municipalities that achieve operating balance, which we do, we don't spend more than we take in, by postponing necessary public infrastructure investments or by drawing down reserves are jeopardizing their long-term sustainability. So, the point, the point there is that if you put these things off, which I think for a variety of reasons has been done by Geneva for several decades, then you get, you get to a point where you can't come back from it. And eventually, residents and businesses are going to see a deterioration in the services that the city is able to provide. And I think we want to get out ahead of that. There is really no data to support the idea that home rules lead cities to bypass state debt limits on borrowing and massively increase property tax. In fact, the opposite is true. Reliance on property tax goes down, which is what we also heard Colin point out several times, when you have recourse to other revenue sources. There's no noticeable effect on the total debt burden. The debt becomes more spread out over different types. What you do see, usually, a modest increase in sales tax. And a study from 2018 points out that the vast majority of home rule municipalities in Illinois have sales tax at or below 1.5%. So, I think the key takeaway there is that with that additional 0.25 or 0.5% of sales tax, you are able to invest in your facilities, in your infrastructure, whether it's streets, whether it's your electrical situation, whether it's water, wastewater, stormwater, which we know there's not many issues with. We also heard tonight about myriad issues needing investment in our downtown. So, you know, if we, if we go the direction of wanting just to do a bond referendum, I don't understand why we would have it be frankly so big and so good because we're then saying to the rest of our city departments and our city staff that we're only really committed to making a new police station and not to fixing the rest of these problems because we don't have a path forward. So, I really think home rule is something that Geneva deserves. I think it would allow us to do many important things beyond simply ensure that we have quality facilities and infrastructure for the next several generations. And I want to apologize in case I stole any of Alder Person Malachi's thunder here, but I can tell that my voice is going to get worse. So, I will leave it there. I am really in favor of home rule, and I would like to hear from anyone who is worried that home rule would not garner support, why they think residents are going to be just automatically inclined to approve, you know, in many cases, a close to $300 increase on their property tax bill. I think I would much prefer to see those folks who come and use the services in Geneva also help shoulder some of this burden, just like I do when I shop in Batavia and St. Charles, West Chicago, any of these home rule municipalities around us. Thank you very much, Chair.
Is that it? Yeah, Larry?
Okay, I just have a couple of questions. One is, you mentioned that on the home rule, part of the cost will go to the taxpayers, and part of the cost will go to people that visit the city. Do you have a percentage of what those two would break down to? And then, the second question I have is, okay, if we do go for a bond, do we have any numbers on what that bond will cost the taxpayers?
I'm going to quickly pass it to the financial expert, simply because my quick answer to your question is it will be based on what you all decide you'd like to do when it comes to finding funding sources. So, there's no way to predict what percentage might be if you went to home rule.
Okay, so that's, we don't have anything on that yet.
It's based on future action, but I will pass it to the financial expert to give you more answers.
Yeah, and piggybacking on that, if the thought is, it's hypothetically, it'd be some mix between property tax-supported bonds and sales tax, it would depend on what the sales tax would be, but we can back into those at the time. If it, if we're discussing a full bond referendum based on the numbers we had presented, the cost range, just looking at a $500,000 fair value home, that would be approximately $398 a year, was the estimate we're looking at. I can give you other values.
No, that's on the bond, but you have no, like, you know, the outside source comes in, and it's going to help pay for this. You don't have any numbers or ideas or what other cities have done or nothing like this?
No, not offhand at the moment.
Okay.
Because it would, it really depend on policy decision and how much the sales tax would drive that.
Okay, thank you.
Marks?
I don't have any questions. I am firmly in the camp of a bond. I don't think this is the point to go for home rule. I think we've kind of spelled out the case for a police station with bonding. I don't think we're going to be able to cover all these improvements with just sales tax. That's going to create too much. I think the residents are going to catch on to that. I think we're going to have to have some type of a, you know, we're going to have to raise real estate taxes for all of these improvements and some sales tax if we go with home rule. I don't think we're prepared to go to home rule. I think that is a huge step. You've got to get the business community behind us. You have to get residents behind us. There's outside forces that are going to come in. Not everybody understands home rule. Home rule is really a level of unlimited taxation. I think that needs to be known. We can raise the sales tax without limits. We have a lot more bonding. Yeah, there's some pluses to it. I get that, you know, we can, you know, use different types of zoning and stuff. But I think we have set the stage over the last, I would say, 16 months, maybe 12 at the short term, where the bonding referendum is what the people expect. I think if we pull that back and come forward with a home rule, it would hurt us. It would be like switching gears. And I would be totally, absolutely against home rule at this time. I don't think it's the right move because we have not set the stage, and I think it has a, both of them are kind of iffy if they're going to pass, but I think the bonding referendum, because we've talked about it, has the best way forward at this time with the less confusion to the taxpayers. Then, that's the way I feel.
Okay, we have someone that would like to speak a second time. Is anybody that hasn't had a chance to speak initially, would they like to speak? Ryaniki?
I have spoken.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I was interested.
On this issue, okay. You spoke earlier on the, yeah, okay, go ahead, Pashki.
I just had no comment earlier and thanked them. This, I actually have something to say. And, you know, I've spoken to members of the council on the phone about this and done a lot of thinking through my thoughts. And for quite a while now, I've been supportive of home rule. I think that it is something that our neighboring communities have and that we are, we should have, except for an arbitrary number that is slightly above our population mark. You know, that's 25,000, and we may reach that sometime this decade, but it's not likely to go there. So, we need to do this referendum if we want to go home rule. I did some reading and found that in 2006, we considered this, and then again, in 2014, it was considered. And, you know, the benefits had nothing to do necessarily directly with a facilities master planning program, but it was identified even back in 2006 that our facilities and our infrastructure were in need of investment. The, so, aside from this issue, I support home rule. So, that's clear. And then, I think what we see in our enterprise funds, where we can take out loans and use non-property tax-based funding, I think we see that we have been able to invest. We have been able to find outside sources. So, when it comes to necessary improvements like the river crossing or the East State Street corridor improvements that are happening right now, those are being done with alternate revenue sources and not being done on the back of our property taxpayers. And if we get home rule, that will be something that we can, we can also do. We can, we can make these incremental investments as needed and larger investments with all the financing tools that are out there and available to other communities and not impacting the property taxpayers. We have this master plan that shows a lot of deficiencies in our facilities, and those deficiencies hurt not just the people that work for us, but the people, the retention of our employees and the training that we invest in our employees, making them sit in substandard conditions and go to meetings in unventilated offices and poorly heated office space. These are things that indirectly impact the residents of this community and the people that it serves because we're actually losing people. I think Rich Babica told me that we're, we're replacing employees on a regular basis now because we're training them and they're being exported to other communities. And if we have nice facilities and good places to work, that will benefit, benefit all of us. So, I challenged myself to sit down and come up with a hypothetical comparison between the funding structure of, and a timeline of just having bonds issued for a police station and potentially then selling the property and paying for a minor improvement to City Hall to bring it up to compliance with handicap code, at least partially. The bond gets us in this decade, just that, a police station and a makeshift addition to City Council or to City Hall, whereas what we can do with the home rule is spread and create a master funding plan, a capital, a capital plan for this community, and each year enact budgets that support that. And that process can be an open process where community members can participate. We can have community inclusion into, into that process very easily. And it's not all going to be dire, do-or-die questions to them. We can, we can change, we can change as we go along as well. So, I think that from that standpoint, the, the home rule really allows us to best include the community into the process that we have to go through to get these facilities up to par. I think that there's a good reason to think that if we don't go with the referendum question, it'd be a single question that we won't be able to get, or if we don't do this now and we go with a bond referendum, I think it is true that we probably won't be able to pass something for the next five to 10 years. And I think that would be a shame because we really do need these improvements to our buildings. Other than that, let's see. I don't think anybody doesn't approach, doesn't approve of this because it's of home rule, because it's not the right thing. I think it's for political benefits that people see it. I think, for instance, I think Alder Person Marks believes that it's not a, not a win, not an easy win to go to home rule, but I believe that it's, it's a better situation for our community as a whole. I'm going to leave it at that, but I think we really should go this way, and I hope that the rest of the council will get on board with it.
Pashki?
Thank you.
We only have 10 minutes left here, so if we could keep our comments rather brief because we still have older people that would like to comment.
I'll try to be quick. So, tying back to a bit earlier in our meeting, our property tax rate is declining, has been declining, pretty low. Do we have an estimate of what that tax rate will look like with a $60 million bond?
So, I can give you the estimated additional tax of the bond. I would lean on Jennifer to add the current tax rate. So, the estimate for the tax on the bond issue would be an additional 25.2506 cents, so 0.2506 per hundred.
67 cents, 65 cents.
And the estimated tax rate was 0.457. Collectively, that'll take us to a 0.708377 rate.
Which is higher than it was in 2016. So, that's interesting. And then, what, do we have any kind of estimates? I'm curious, just because I've looked at the other cities that have done police stations and municipal developments. Thank you, Leah Pardo, for sharing that lovely list that I was able to use. I'm curious what a 1% home rule sales tax would generate for us. Any idea, ballpark figure?
I don't want to be misquoted, but I think we have that 1% right now as our non-home rule sales tax. So, I believe that's about $3 million in general fund and $3 million in our capital. I can double-check that, though, and give you a solid answer.
Okay.
Just going off of the top of my head right now.
Thank you. So, as far as the surveys last year, and I know I asked you this, I think, last week too, people's comfort level with a dollar amount increase on their taxes, we were using a different average-
Correct.
-house cost, right? You just quoted a $500,000 home being $300, maybe eight.
Actually, I asked him, we were $350,000 when we tested, so I asked what the $350,000 was. And I'll just share for you, it was $272, as you showed me.
Yep.
So, it was $272 was at the, at the $350,000. So it was $272 was at the, at the $350,000 house level, which is what we had used as the median.
Okay. So I feel like that's, I mean, I think we know because of the error and everything, it's going to come in significantly higher than what we had estimated when we were communicating about this previously, which, in my estimation, and I know I've heard people say, you know, people are expecting the bond referendum. I get that, but they also know that an error was made and that means it's going to cost them more. And so I think that doing our due diligence and saying, "Look, we have this other option", which is home rule, that allows us to stay within the means of what people said they were comfortable with by using alternate funding streams. So I've looked at that list of other cities that have done developments to see what they did with property taxes, how they funded it, what other sources of revenue they used. And there was a really, there was a wide range. Some sold property, most of them made use of the long-term bond, which you can only do when you're home rule. That helped bring down costs. The only one of those seven cities on this list that increased property taxes at all was Elmhurst, and that was $53 on a $500,000 home. And they can do that because they're home rule. So they can, they can spread those costs out. They used, they increased hotel tax, they used the home rule sales tax and long-term bonds. Others got some grants. Almost all of them made use of the home rule sales tax. And they were able to do all of these projects without significantly increasing property taxes, which I think, at the end of the day, we need to be mindful of the feedback we got from residents about what they're comfortable with. And I think that it's a more honest response to them to say, "Look, home rule gets us there. It gets us what we need for our public facilities, what our city deserves in a way that is cost effective for our residents." So, that's where I'm at. Thank you.
Did you want to speak, Mark?
Um.
Ryaniki?
Yes. Looking at the time, I'm not sure we have time for this. I actually have a rather complex question, and so I'm, I can pose it.
First of all, Mr. Chair, we do have time if the council
Right.
...
When we get to 10 o'clock, I was going to ask a question.
Sorry?
Go ahead, you can start and then we'll ask a question
Okay.
Midstream.
There's, there's three things that we seem to be consensus on. One is that we want to limit the impact particularly on property tax increases. That's been a concern broadly for some time. The second is that in the master plan, there is a number of projects that are going to be, have to be addressed over the next decade or so. And the third, as Alderman Marks noted, is there's some reticence in the community to, or wariness to a, to going to home rule. So, now here's the question, and I turn to you. Let's turn this on its head. You did a very nice job of presenting the singular, singular message and bullet points for the benefit of home rule. If I call on you to do the same for, let's do a bond, knowing that we're going to have to do multiple bonds over the next decade, what's, how do you market that? What's the bullet points on that? Why is that preferable to home rule?
Yeah, and I, I would say we are here fully objectively, so
No, that's what I'm asking for.
Yeah, to be clear, we wouldn't have a preference.
I'm literally turning this on its head.
So you're asking me to basically sell the other referendum, which is what I'll do because you asked me to do it.
Yeah.
Ultimately, number one, it's to solve a finite problem with a finite solution. The idea of a bond referendum is here's the exact problem, here's the exact dollar amount, here's how long you're going to pay it, and here's what you're going to get for that money. It's a very clear situation for the taxpayer and for the voter, which ultimately, that part of it is definitely more favorable to them. The fact that the cost sunset, the fact that what's on the ballot is very clear. It's, this is what you're getting if you select the yes box when you vote. A home rule referendum doesn't quite give you that level of clarity. It requires a much more extensive educational campaign to say, "This is what we'll do. This is what we won't do. We're going to pass something at the meeting to say, 'We'll never do X and we'll always do Y.'" It's a lot more work that goes into explaining a home rule, whereas it's very clear when it comes to a bond referendum.
Okay. And how do you address the multiple, we're going to be addressing multiple bond issues over 10 years.
Yeah, so that's where I get into then the negatives of, of that option. Because ultimately, you know, up until now, and I assume beyond, the city's been very clear with everything we do, be fully transparent and open with the public, tell them the good and tell them the bad. So I assume that would continue, but obviously, you know, we'll have to continue the conversation. But ultimately, that would then be what the, we would be saying is, "Listen, this gives you a finite solution to a finite problem, but the finite problem isn't so finite. There are many more problems we need to address, and this will not do anything about those problems." So we would be clear about that, that this solves this problem, but there are more we're going to have to talk about.
Thank you.
Okay, it's 10 o'clock. The, the board, the council can continue if it's the, if it's their wish. I'd asked, to take
Motion to extend the time?
Okay, there's a motion to extend the time. To what time?
A time specific. Let's start with 10:30.
A motion to extend till 10:30. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, voice forward.
Mayor, aye.
Okay.
Powering aye.
You're doing their own rule. That's okay. All right, Furnish?
Aye.
Kilburg?
Aye.
Katsarak?
Aye.
Maliki?
Aye.
Marks?
Aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
Pashke?
Aye.
Ryaniki?
Aye.
Maliki?
Thank you. Yeah, I've gone way into the weaves on, on home rule with the history through town. As mentioned earlier, it seems like discussion's been going on since 2006, back in 2014, so much that it was an item in our strategic pan, plan 2018 to put a plan together for staff to, to educate the voters about the benefits of home rule, which seemingly, I don't think ever happened. I'm not sure why, but I don't, I don't think it moved past that. The arguments I, I hear against home rule are, it's not going to pass, and all it is is a gateway to tax the heck out of residents. Geneva, we haven't educated the public on, we haven't gone that step to actually put it in front of the public and have an honest conversation, I don't think, since it's been originally, you know, talked about in 2006. You know, I've, I've read several papers by, you know, universities and whatnot about studying home rule. And statistically, in Illinois, it's, it's unfounded that home rule communities take advantage of the residents and just, and just increase taxes willy-nilly. So that just, we're all residents, we all care about the community historically. You know, we care about precedent and our neighbors. So, I mean, I don't see, that, that argument just doesn't hold water for me as well. You know, some communities have come back with passing a resolution, which we, we've talked about, you know, to, to staying within the property tax cap limits if you're home rule. And that's been, that's been a pretty favorable strategy, I think. When you also look at funding, so if I, if I'm looking at the police station, and there are two different funding mechanisms. We have the bond referendum, which Colin said is a single item. It's, that's what's going to happen, this is what we need to get this done. Or we have a home rule referendum in order to fund the police station. And as mentioned earlier, so we have, as a non-home rule community, our bond is limited to 20 years, correct?
Yeah, that is correct.
So we have, so we have to pay for a 50-year building within 20 years. Home rule gives us the opportunity to extend that bond for longer than 20 years. So, if you're retiring in Geneva, who's just getting ready to retire on this police station's bill, you're 60, 65, and you're still planning on living in the city as long as you can, you're going to be paying this complete bond, you know, for the next 20 years. So it's likely that you're going to be, you know, having this, this large, this large bill on your property tax to pay for the police station. A home rule community can spread that out. So, somebody who's going to just, just getting ready to retire, who's going to be on fixed income more than likely for the next 20 years, you know, a home rule community gives that, those residents a little, a little leeway where they're not the ones, you know, you know, they're not going to be hit with that entire bill for the whole next 20 years. So I think that's, that's something that's important to consider when you're looking at the different ways to fund our, our facilities, the police station specifically. I mean, there are several other advantages as far as, as was mentioned about home rule versus non-home rule, that, that I believe are favorable to the community, and I think that as policymakers on council, I believe are things that we would like to see. We just need to put ourselves in that seat for leadership to, to be out there and say, "This is the way to go, this isn't the way to go, and why." I haven't found any evidence really to convince myself that, that home rule is not, not the way to go for referendum and to move the city forward. You know, we have our special interest groups that, that come back and just, you know, spout about property tax, property tax, which, again, statistically is, is, is really not factual, I don't think. Another bullet point bringing up is the real estate transfer tax. That's, that's something that we, that home rule does not automatically give communities. That, that's a separate standalone referendum for, for a city to decide to put that tax in place. So that talking point, I think, is basically negated. Another talking point I, I learned about is the whole, you know, rental housing and this and that, and taking advantage of, of landlords for different reasons, and I don't see that happening in our community because, I mean, there's not, there's not a lot of that, that has, that has happened, I don't think. So I, I don't really think that, that is on our mind. I mean, we're looking at, we're looking at a way to move the city forward on several issues that I think that are important to us on a policy level, and also a better way to fund our facilities. And, in conclusion, what I've done in my own research, I think the best way to proceed with funding this structure to give us more flexibility and, and to keep payments low through a longer bond is home rule. And I think that's where I'll, I'll leave my comments for now.
I saw Larry first, and then we'll go to Jeff.
Larry's gone. Oh, Larry spoke. I forgot.
Oh, well, I didn't know that you, you want to speak? Go. Katsarak?
Excuse me, Chair. I think Jeff has the floor. He already raised his hand and has put his microphone
Okay.
I'll just do a quick question, then circle back when I have more after you speak. Do you have, to our communications expert, if we were to do the bond in the spring, do you have any sense as to how long that wait would have to be before we would reasonably entertain home rule? And I suppose that depends on whether it succeeds or is defeated, but do you have any, can you speak a little bit to that thought process of how we then introduce a home rule concept and the best way to do that as a trailer, should we take on that bond initially? Are we arguing less about some of the tax? Does that kind of go away because we've defined a, a major lift already as a specific thing, and then there's some more focus on the other benefits, or, and I guess I'm getting off of my question when I ask you, just for timing, but kind of a couple considerations for sequencing?
Yeah, and then how that might look. Anything is possible, so certainly you could get it done faster than this, but I think based on what we've seen, the cadence in other communities or other types of government, it tends to be about a four-year gap between one successful and another successful. I'd say you probably could do it as fast as two. Going March and November would be difficult, but not impossible. And certainly, there's nothing to say you can't try multiple times. Some communities have tried multiple times before succeeding. So it's not to say you couldn't try in November, but I would, just for planning, I would assume it might be a two-to-four-year gap before you could possibly get the home rule passed. Just
Regardless of the way that that outcome was of that
That assumes that you go forward with the bond referendum in March and then it passes.
Okay.
Should it not pass, the whole process then gets elongated even further from there.
You have to recalibrate that.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I wouldn't say, when you mentioned that the, getting the defined project like the police station completed, that that necessarily changes the conversation with, with home rule. I don't, I don't know how much that changes it, to be honest. Home rule is still about sort of a sustainable, long-term plan. If you have one fewer project in that plan, it still is a, it's still the same idea. So I don't know that that changes it too much. I still think you're looking at a very similar process, a very similar, I'll use the R-word, the referendum and what, what it encompasses. It just means that there's one fewer project because that's been resolved with another funding source. But you created a new problem, which is now people saying, "Well, we just gave you money, now you want more money." That's, it's a new conversation now that that's, that gets
Right, and I'm just working through in my mind, what is the best way to get our facility master plan implemented in, you know, the five-year and 10-year and, and keeping our property taxes as low as possible.
Yeah.
And weighing the downsides of any setbacks in that process, which is really the essence of what we're debating here.
Thank you. Well, I didn't want to, I wanted to sit back and enjoy the conversation here, and I think it's been a good one. But this is what I'm, I'm hearing from my point of view. Trust is critical for the home rule. I don't know if we have that yet. I mean, I think some of the studies we did in terms of the referendum last year said that we had a lot of credibility with the city, but I don't know what's out there for home rule and what opposition we're going to get, both from our own residents and from outside sources. So, for me, I feel like we've tested this proposition of going for a bond. All the field, all the feedback has been good. You're, you're not a no, but we did a whole community survey group and everything like that. Is, is something wrong? No, okay. And, and so, I, I feel like that proposition has been tested and shown that we should have a good chance of success there. And I think changing the story to home rule right now is, is just not good for the whole process. We've, we've told the city we wanted to go for the bond for the police station. Frankly, we, we screwed up a step in there. That's unfortunate. Let's, let's get back to business and get the police station done, I guess is what I'm really trying to say. It's been our agreed goal to go for, to get the police station done first, and I really think that that's really where we should stick. I do want to recognize in respect, like, I'm going to call them intellectual arguments that Amy and Alderman Maliki and others have stated. I 100% agree with them. I think we deserve it. I, I think we can work towards it, but I don't think that voters go to the ballot box and intellectual solutions to the problems. I think they go on emotional. And so, I think those are good reasons to make us all feel good about it, but I don't think that those intellectual arguments necessarily lead to success at the ballot box. So, you know, ultimately, what I'm saying is, I, I'm, I, I think we should go with the bond referendum. I think we should stick to our story, and I think that there's a good chance and good reason that maybe we could go in a year or two, kind of as Alderman Palmquist is suggesting with sequencing, in a couple years, and we could even, I mean, we are now, but we could say, "We want to earn your trust through this bond referendum that we're doing. We want to show that we can control expenses. We, we want to show that we can get it done in budget, in time, or at least, you know, on track for that if we go sooner than it's completed." So, for those reasons, I'm supporting the So for those reasons, I'm supporting the bond referendum at this time. Thank you.
Okay, is there anybody, yeah, Larry.
Furnish. He just said what I was gonna say, to get us out of here by 10:30. I mean, we could be here midnight talking about this one, but I'm the same way. It's cost and trust. Taxpayers are gonna know what their cost is gonna be. And once we get the police station built at a good number, then they'll have our trust and then we can come back and maybe do the home rule. I mean, right now, all these managers are gonna get a nice, you know, if we go with the home rule, everybody gets a nice new building, all the employees are happy, and the cost might be a little bit more than the taxpayers wanna see. You guys have been here 30, 35 years, know what the school district went through. It, I mean, it, our school taxes really skyrocketed, you know, over the time, but right now we have all good school facilities. Same thing would happen with your home rule. You give everybody a new building right away, taxpayers are gonna come back and not be happy. I think the bond is a great idea. You'll know what your cost is gonna be and you're gonna build trust. So I support the bond issue.
Chair, I would like to make another comment when it's appropriate.
Marx? What? Who would like the floor?
Bowery.
Bowery. Marx has the floor and then Bowery. Marx?
I, I guess what, maybe, I, I, I'm not 100% opposed to a home rule. I am at this time. I think the best thing to do at this point, and I'll clarify, I think it's very much like Alderman Kozarog was. Let's get the bond referendum, then let's space this out and let's show the people what we can do with sales tax. It's, can't all come from sales tax. What we're gonna have to increase taxes for and build out a, another eight, 10-year plan that spreads it. 1% sales tax, if we pass that right away, I'll tell you, that's gonna be higher than any other sales tax rate in the communities here. That's gonna put us above 9%. So I, I, I think there's a lot of work here to build the trust too. Let's get the bond referendum, then let's map out all the rest of what we need to do and build that trust. And everybody's, you know, we've been talking about home rule, Alderman Malecki was right since 2018. We talked about it last year that we wanted to do education on it. We just haven't done that yet. I think we get through the bond referendum and the education process starts, and I think it has to start shortly thereafter, with a long-range plan. Here is what we see is going to have to happen. We can have people pay for it and we're gonna get to where we wanna get. I would love to do that now, but I think we're too short of a time to teach that. We're not gonna get this until early December. There shoots the holiday. Early voting is gonna probably start, I would suspect, mid-February, late February, which, February, February 5th starts early voting. We got one month to explain home rule. That's what I'm concerned about. One month to set out, explain it, because you're gonna get people that are gonna start voting in the beginning of February and it's gone. You know, that vote is already done and if you, you can't get that message across when you got through the holiday season. I think we gotta take our win, spread this thing out, map it out for all the residents, come back a year, year and a half, have a great campaign, show it, and I think we're gonna get there and we're gonna get all the other steps in the process. We've been looking at this for multiple, multiple years. We've got the plans out there for the police station. Residents are expecting that. I think let's build on that trust. Yes, we made a misstep last year, but it's easy to explain, and move forward at that rate. And that's what I, I would love to see. And then at that point, I would be for home rule. I would be for taking that out for a vote. I really would. I think then we've built the trust and we've shown the map of what we're gonna do and to put that map together right now, we don't have that, that possibility.
Bowery.
Thank you, Chair. I would like to point out to the council that when we were discussing the specific dollar amounts of put on the bond referendum last, late winter, we were very concerned with following our consultant's advice about what the upper range was of what a taxpayer would be willing to see on their tax bill. And my recollection, and perhaps Colin can help me, I know that he was not the one presenting, I believe he might have even been on Prinselweave, which is super worthwhile, but perhaps he has from his partner, I believe that the dollar amount that people were barking at was $200 on a $350,000 house. We, we took the amount down that we were initially considering in terms of, once we realized we had to just have public safety, we couldn't have public safety and City Hall, but I believe we further reduced the amount because we needed to keep it under that roughly $200 cutoff. Now we're talking about a $270 increase on a tax bill for 20 years. Is that correct? Am I getting those numbers right?
Yeah, so looking back at the data from the reports, obviously various pieces had to be pulled together because as was mentioned, we didn't always have the, the accurate data, but from what we see, yes, we were trying to keep that tax impact at or below $200 a year. If I'm looking at the data now, we saw a path to get to 215, maybe even as high as 225, but obviously now we're looking at for the same home would be $272. So that definitely is above the range. We were trying to keep this in while we were working on this previously.
So then with all due respect to my fellow alderpersons, I do not understand why you think there is a solid win here for a ballot referendum for a bond issue that is going so far above what we heard in our survey people were willing to pay for 20 years. This is, I mean, I just, I don't understand why we would take that so seriously and I know some of the composition of the council has changed, but I, I don't understand how various of my colleagues here can seem so sanguine that a bond referendum is gonna get passed that's going to impose somewhere between $200 to $500 on people's tax bills, depending on the amount, on the value of their house, for 20 years. I mean, do we remember that the library, which was gonna impose, I believe, an increase of something like $40 to $50 per year for most residents? That passed by like 45 votes. We're talking about, for some residents, and again, perhaps I'm comparing apples to oranges here, we're talking about something close to an order of magnitude higher and acting like it's no problem, people will definitely pass it. I thoroughly disagree and I have yet to hear what sounds to me like an actual pathway to get to the point of implementing the plans that we have. I am so delighted to hear that alderperson Marx thinks that there are so many potential benefits to home rule and what we're lacking is just education. I wish we'd started the education earlier as well, except then, also, people don't like to hear about things for too long. I think people get annoyed when a campaign goes on too long. I think the key points of this are very clear and easy to convey to people. This gives us a long-term, sustainable solution, a way to fund our services and infrastructure to make sure that you have a high-quality employee coming to help you when you have an emergency. You have people working in the building department that are happy to come to work. In fact, in my understanding is that, given the increased variety of tools, including longer debt limits, a greater variety of types of debt that we can take out, other revenue sources, the cost to the average resident will actually be significantly lower than $270 per year for 20 years for a $350,000 home. And of course, the cost is significantly higher as the cost go, as the value of the house goes up. So, you know, I, I'm glad to see the conversation moving away from what I think are pretty spurious arguments about unlimited taxation. I think that's very easy to disprove to people and does not require a super intellectual argument, can just say, nobody does that. We have all of this information and nobody just does unlimited taxation. In fact, property taxes tend to be lower in home rule communities. It's really, really simple. So, as we go forward, I'm finding it harder and harder to get behind the idea of supporting a ballot measure that is simply for a bond amount, because I, I think that just compounds our problem and means that we will, will really never be able to sufficiently tackle these other issues. I think it will, in the long-term hamstring the city and our ability to follow through with our master plan. Thank you.
Pashki? Okay, we have five minutes, so, and I'd like to say something yet too.
It's always me.
So go ahead.
It's always me.
It's to you. No, Malecki's next too.
I know, but I'm always the one warned about how much time.
Okay, I'm sorry. I, I've just stated it's, we've got five minutes left.
What is the shortest successful campaign you guys have done?
Forty-five days.
Thank you.
I'd say we always pledged that we would never do it again, but it was 45 days was the fastest that we have done.
And it was successful?
Correct.
And you've done this multiple times successfully. Is two months, three months, pretty normal?
For a bond referendum, three months is normal. For a, maybe a limiting rate, three months is normal. I will say, just to be always fair and clear, home rule does require more conversation. So it would be fast, there's no doubt about it. There would need to be a lot of work by city staff and by you all frankly, as representatives of the city, to go out and educate the public and answer their questions. So it, it will be a very heavy lift, but it is possible.
Okay, thank you. And then, how would a 40-year bond change the property tax impact for individuals with, using an average home? You can use whatever numbers you wanna use.
Yeah, and I, I don't, I'm not gonna be able to quote you a number and run a 40-year bond right now. I, I will say, so you, you are gonna get some marginal benefit in terms of extending the life of the loan. Yes, home rule municipalities can go up 40 years for GO bonds, general obligation bonds. It is not common. In fact, I've never seen a 40-year old, 40-year bond. I have seen 30. You know, knowing that you can extend past life of the asset, we're talking about a 50-year asset, so understood there, but it is not common to the point, it's almost never done. 30 is.
So 30 would.
In the outside range of, I would say, you know, you, it's much more common to see a 30-year bond than a 40-year bond. 20 is probably the most common and somewhere between 20 and 30.
And do you see a fairly significant impact?
I would say you'll see some impact from 20 to 30 in terms of annual, annual debt service coming down and therefore property tax coming down. You, you will see a much less impact from 30 to 40. You're, you're adding a significant amount of interest at that point. So therein lies, you know, the kind of rub that, there. I, those are things I can run, not at the podium, so can provide.
And I guess my only other thought was exactly what alderperson Bowery pointed out, which is, yes, we did do a lot of communicating and surveying leading up to a potential bond to last year, but I think a lot of that is not information that we should be relying on, knowing that the, the annual cost for individuals is not close to what they were anticipating. So I think that it's, I think there is a straightforward communication path to explaining why home rule makes more sense, in that we're being mindful of the limitations that people said they were comfortable with paying for. And that, I think, is something that we should take earnestly as our responsibility as elected officials and policymakers, that we're looking for a policy that meets the needs of our residents and what they said they're comfortable with cost-wise is something that we could do with home rule and not the bond that we're suggesting at this point. So I think that's a fair point.
Malecki?
Yeah, thank you. And that's, I was just gonna be really quick and just say, that's, I mean, that's the argument for me between the two financing, you know, choices here, is, is you've got, one choice with home rule is if you tell somebody that they're gonna have a lower payment every six months when they go to pay their property taxes at the clerk's office, with a 30-year bond, that's, that's, that's a selling point right there. You know, people don't look out, myself included, don't look out 20 years. I mean, you know, it's like buying a mortgage. I mean, most people are gonna buy a 30-year mortgage rather than, you know, be lucky enough to have the capital and stuff to go and get like a 15 for a better interest rate. So, I mean, that's, I think that's our number one talking point between the two options right there.
Okay, we're, we're at 10:30. Is there a motion to extend? I'd move to extend since I hadn't had a chance to speak yet.
We'll give you 15 minutes. Okay. I'll, I'll move to extend by half an hour if you want.
Okay. Motion to extend till 11 o'clock. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded by Furnish. Close, uh, let's read the roll.
Kozarog?
Aye.
Malecki?
Aye.
Marx?
Aye.
Mayor?
Mar, aye.
Palmquist?
Aye.
Pashki?
Aye.
Rayaki?
Aye.
Bowery?
I have to go to bed so that I don't get pneumonia, so nay, but I will watch this later.
What?
Furnish?
Aye.
Pilberg?
Aye.
It carries, will extend. Okay, I just had a couple of things I'd wanted to share and I'll be very brief. We won't be here till 11. Colin, can you tell me the, the referendum history here in Geneva over the last 20 or 30 years?
Uh, that's not something I have on hand.
Okay. Let's start in 1992. And I'm gonna cover a 30-year period. Geneva Middle School South referendum, one effort, it passed. Mill Creek Elementary School passed, one ballot. We've got other, other schools in the district as well. Let's go to Heartland Elementary School, Williamsburg Elementary School, Fabian Elementary School, major refurbishing asbestos removal at Harrison Street School. Between the Geneva Park District and the Geneva School District, we built the gymnasium on the east side. We also, during that period of time, we also built a fire station. We also built a library. It was a close vote, true, but all of those passed on the first ballot. And as, to my recollection, I think we've only had one referendum here in Geneva that failed over a 30-year period. So I think if you look at Geneva's population, they're telling us that they like the referendum process and the fact that if you give them a good argument for something that you need, they'll support us. The other thing is, is you have to look at the, the demographics. When you pass a school referendum, about 30% of the people in the community have children in the school district. When you build a library or a fire station or police station, everybody benefits from that. And it's true that everybody does benefit from our schools, but only about 30% of our population really have children in school. So there's 70% of our residents that we're asking them to support something that they're probably not gonna get a benefit from immediately. So I think we have a history of success with referendums, because if you give them a good argument, you give them a reason, they'll stand with you and they'll support it. And I think the facts speak for themselves. This community will support a referendum that makes sense. And true, people complain about property taxes and property taxes increase and people get pushed back, people on boards, school boards, library boards, you get pushed back because people don't wanna pay higher taxes, but when it comes time to vote, people vote and support it. I think that as we look at home rule, East State Street with home rule, we were waiting for how many years for the funding to come through from the state of Illinois, Mayor? 20-plus years. Okay, that would have probably been wrapped into some type of a, an East State Street improvement project. I'm just giving you as an example and that not may, that may not be the best example, but with a referendum, the people know exactly what you're asking of them. They know the duration and either they accept it or they reject it. They know the duration and, uh, either they accept it or they reject it. The other thing is, is we're asking for, we're talking about a fire station and that's the only thing that we're definitively, uh, have advanced our plans with specifics. So in other words, if somebody, if we go to referendum in March, or if we go for home rule in March, people ask, well, yeah, there's the police station, but then what are your plans for two years out, four years out, six years out? And what's the sequence and what's the priority for the construction of the improvement here? Uh, improvements at the other fire station in town? Uh, I think people are going to want to, want specifics. And the thing is, over that next decade, a lot of us, I know probably there's one sitting up here, that won't be here. And as boards change and how people approach home rule, that changes as well. Now, you can vote people out of office, that's true, but I'm just saying there's a lot more uncertainty, I think, with home rule than maybe, uh, uh, is, is being shared this evening. And I don't know, is there a panacea as it relates to, to funding facilities with home rule?
Fairly broad question that's very difficult to answer, sir.
It is difficult to answer and if you get, if I get asked that question, uh, what should I answer?
It's a difficult question.
There's all kinds of funding sources and you're not going to pay anything as a taxpayer?
Obviously, that's not what we would say, but if you have defined questions, I'd be happy to answer any defined questions that you have.
Pardon me?
If you have defined questions for what we do, I'd be happy to answer them, but rhetorical is very difficult.
I agree. But anyhow, I think as we go around the room, I think we all agree on one thing. We want a fire station and we want it built as soon as possible.
Police station.
I mean, excuse me, a police station as soon as possible. I can hear from this evening that there's disagreement over home rule. And I think the wise thing is if we go for anything, we ought to be unanimous and we ought to be in full agreement. And with that, uh, I'd only took seven minutes and...
Those are the only two that haven't opined. They don't have to.
Oh, do you want to?
You don't have to, but eventually we need a spark.
I had a follow-up question to my previous.
Okay.
Clarify, Anthony, that, was that a $65 million bond?
59.4 million dollar bond.
So procedurally, would we be setting that, agreeing to that number or is that a second round of conversations crafting the question after we decide on which approach to go for first?
Home rule's home rule. There's no number attached to it.
No, I understand that. I'm talking about the bond.
Yeah.
You know, matching where we, I guess where I'm going is, is there a path to match the police station cost close to where there's more of a comfort level? And maybe I'm splitting hairs there. When you looked at the cost, there were some that were, you know, in the 50 million and is that, if, does that make a material change or if that's for conversation for another day to determine exactly that bond amount to be able to be more accurate on the payment?
When the craft of ballot question, obviously, we will have to have a number, but ultimately that's a discussion you all can have on what that number should be. And certainly when it comes to a bond question, the lower the number, the higher the odds of success at the ballot box, so.
Without shortchanging what we...
Correct.
Why?
Mark?
I'm not opining.
Okay. I think that, that pretty well does it for the council. Uh, the, uh...
Consensus?
I hope you have something to work with here. Uh, we have public comment as well. Is anyone that would like to speak at this time? And you have no restrictions.
My name's Carson Pollak. I live in Geneva. So, um, thank you all. Great presentation. Wish we had that last year, right? If we're going to sell the bond, if we're going to sell the bond, we need that. People, that's what people want to see. When you go out and ask people, what is it? That was nice. We had spreadsheets, different options. What size? I mean, that's up to the sheet, that's up to the police department. I don't know what size he needs. I don't know how many cars he'd be inside, I don't even have cars, so outside, in my business, I would know that. That's his business, right? But he needs to get out there, police department, promote that, okay? This is what we have, this is what we need, and this is where we're going to spend it. The residents, the citizens of Geneva will approve that. I guarantee you, if you give them the information, like now, you gotta get that out like now. When we start and vote, February 5th? We gotta get that out now. What do we say, 45 days to get that out there, right? We need like six months to get a home rule out there? I don't know why we're talking, if we went home rule, let's talk, talk about that six months ago. Let's get it educated, let's get the information out there. We need to get that out there now. Let's get this police station done, let's get something done. Trust for home rule, right? Do the citizens trust you all? I don't know, we had some issues last year, right? We had some big meetings here, we talked about some things, right? Do the citizens trust us? Do they, not us, but do they, do they trust the council, the mayor? You know, home rule, people ask me, you know, people say, well, if we have home rule, we should have term limits for the mayor, we should have term limits for this because you don't want that, like, it's almost like a, a kingdom where it goes forever, right? You gotta have limits so that you control it. If something's not going right, you can change it, right? A lot of the other cities at home rule also have a different form of government. That's, what's that? That's what people say, right? Do we have a hundred percent of home rule? No. There's, there's good opinions, I get the home rule concept. Sounds good. It's like the easy button staples, right? Hit that easy button. That's what home rule is. So the citizens of Geneva don't want the home rule. They like the referendum. Referendum, it's 200, 300, 400 dollars a house for an average house. Our average houses are, I mean, most people, 350,000, maybe, maybe it's more towards 500,000, but let them know for their price, you know, they're smart people, they get it. Say, we need a police station, you get out there, you promote it, this is what we want, this is the size we want, this is why we want it. Citizens will get it. It will get approved, I guarantee you. Thank you.
Anyone else for public comment tonight? Any new business by the council? If not, is there a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn.
Or stand adjourned.